All the questions we have to impress his name.
Yeah.
What do we do? Why don't we make sure on our? Now. We'll go ahead and proceed with. Hopefully more comments, Mr. Forehand.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Black.
Mister, Mister Underwood and I had the opportunity to attend the Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference. Now in late November, and it was very, very informative, let's say, meeting in which representatives from localities come together to talk about issues in the state. One of the things that we did come out of it, Mr. Underwood, is we found out there was money that was available from the state and from the feds that they made lawsuits dealing with opioid money. Money that we can use to help combat some of the drug crisis that is going on in our country right now. So that's very good information. Also, we just got out a meeting with, we just had a meeting right now over the last hour with the schools. And one of the things that is really important, I think, to, for the public to understand is we were given data on how much the state has given to schools since 2008 compared to the localities in Virginia has. A lot of times what happens is when the state doesn't give the amount of money that is needed, those localities come to. Also. The school system, the school systems will come to us and ask us to pick that up. Well, Mr. Underwood, can I talk about this? And I think it's something that the counties and. I think it's something that the counties need to across the state of Virginia to come together and demand that the state pick up their part to act. The schools are funded by both the state and the localities. And I'm not sure the pressure has come from the state for them. So I think that's something that we need to work together with the schools as far as that funding is concerned.
Especially at that moment, it's been a good message, and we'll have to run it through the committee on finance. It's been a good message, and there is certainly a lot of money. And this, two times, I mean, thank Mr. Underwood, as Travis said, the most smart teams have started trying some things, and a lot of things that he heard about at the job. And she says, I'm not speaking for the world or my world. And then following the, the very bad plans that are coming up in general in Northland Bay. So we're also looking for kind of those things, and people that are willing to run around and run around, and have students to come, and so some of us want to come in. So we're looking forward to seeing that this bit. So tell us. Mr. Thorne. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. I just have two very quick ones. Um, the areas that the current thing for being there is grateful person, there's a hand contest, there's food for that team. Uh, we're just sort of scheduled last Friday night, maybe rest a lot of fabulous faces. And the business stuff could answer their own contest, but then fabulous, fabulous to space and anybody that's got something else to learn, I would like. Almost every school in Birmingham, if I, if it's a town that has money. But I forgot to tell everybody that participated in Birmingham parade, which was supposed to be fabulous, but as everybody has said, it was not exactly a fabulous parade. And even with the late times in college, it was past ten to Sunday, and we had a good practice, both of us and great friends. And again, thank, thank everybody that participated in that. Thank you, Mr. Thorne. This is mine. Thank you, Mr. Thorne. This is Tony Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. I guess, uh, just to feel first that I'd like to extend that personal comparisons to the Echo family. I think to the Underwood family, uh, as the Echo said, they were blessed for twenty eight years of his life, and fifty four years passed away last week. And Mr. Underwood, as, as you mentioned, those are mother in our parents, I would extend comparisons against the family as well. Who used to serve in the Chinese school board. Um, I also had a class from the constituency who had the treasures after some untethered by pain and smoking gas payments. And then, and then whether it was a vessel with tax payments, I learned if the board would consider giving the treasury the ability to, I just hold whatever rights have happened in that to. Our cousins there, where people had, you know, fought with the boys, and maybe we could have somebody on the board or a teacher would like, uh, definitely somebody would look at those. And then last, I wanna, I wanna give a special thank you to, uh, fans, to, uh, to, uh, Mrs. Fluff. Who prepared what I thought was our first ever twelve year audit, uh, which we provided to the board, they had mental foregatherings. And everyone had numbers, and everyone seemed to read, read through it, through the audit, and, and many times we discussed in our meeting with the school board is. We discovered that the actual budget or action with speed retreats, uh, in the previous year. Well, a lot of last thing that we tried to school with looking at that number to make sure that many times we noticed was in 2020. The board of supervisors provided 1.6 million dollars more for instruction on the spot the year before. I mean, thankfully, the supervisor provided 1.9 million dollars more than was spent in the year before. So the board of supervisors is trying to make sure we get teacher raises, that's one thing that I've said I wanted to do. So it's up to the board of supervisors to appropriate money and then prepare the school board if it wants to give you that money. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Uh, oh, one, I did have one more. This is our last meeting here. So I'm saying early Merry Christmas to folks, and depending upon your faith, I know not, not all believe in Christmas, but for those that don't, happy Halloween.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just had a few comments myself. I bet that my constituents in the legislature, constituents are in the concert series. State Fair. They had several concerns. We're going to address, I asked those constituents to please come to the board meeting in January, September, where we talked about the new festival permit. Because I was very surprised when I could hear the concert in my house from, from, uh, metal event park. So I think we have some work to do to ensure that these are events that don't disturb the community as much as I really found out that they do. So we had some good meetings, I mean, some good conversations, and we're working with Mr. Finch regarding the festival, I think. Um, it just shows you that you really don't know what you don't know until it happens. And most of the time it has an adverse effect on the quality of life, and that's something certainly we don't want. So we're gonna do our best to continue to work for our constituents. So I did, I think I attended the ECHO, um, conference. And I got a chance to talk to many of the board supervisors members across, um, state. And we do have some issues regarding, you know, some of the approving money for the schools. Because some of the localities did not fund the mandate of five percent raised to teachers. They said it would cost them too much money, they couldn't afford it. So one thing that we talked about with, uh, Baker was ensuring, one of the things that we talked about is ensuring that we act funding. When there's a mandate, let's make sure that the funding is there. I think it hurts the county, I think it hurts whatever entity, the school, sheriff's department, fire department, whoever, there's a mandate and no funding. It actually puts the burden upon our taxpayers. As I said in the meeting earlier, you think about the tax rate increase. If you think about inflation of six percent. If you had a hundred thousand dollars in the bank and you wanted to spend it, you could probably buy about ninety four thousand dollars worth of goods. Not good for the consumer at all. But we have to continue to make sure that we're stewards of the money that is given to us by the citizens of Caroline County. The news where the county, I think, we have, we're going to join the settlement regarding the opioidic funds. To hope that the additional funds are possible for the twenty two, twenty three year. And finally. We got a meeting with, um, school board just recently, I mean, but this, I put you on, that's all we're doing. Some good conversations, you know, some things that, that I think personally, I guess, probably getting a little, um, activated sometimes. But I just want to make sure that every penny that is given to us by the city, we do our active efforts. So, uh, if there's any one of the, the more hot, we need to charge up in my head, that's my heart, my stimulation. Thank you. Board members, any? Yes, one here. Board members, any amendments to the agenda? Mr. Forehand, strike that up, fatigue, tiring, I'm striking out. All of them are due. Yep, okay. That's your only amendment? Yes, thank you, Mr. Black. That's. Mr. Sealy?
I have not, Chairman.
Mr. Black? Yeah, yes. Mr. Thomas, it's true, and maybe you would just wanna make an appointment of chair of the board member or staff who's just the gate helping citizens with that problem, uh, that thing from our. Well, you know, the, the mouth that's open gets fed.
I'm gonna, we have it somewhere. I think it was the idea of, yeah. I believe I can say, I understand, which is why, thank you, thank you.
Also added to the agenda that would make us like, or someone to look into the. Was it, the, uh, the online tax fraud. Online fraud. And Mr. Thomas, so, yeah, I want to pay my taxes with my debit card, and it went back on through. But then if I gave you this credit, it went through, but I had to pay a seventy dollar fee. Ah, some, and then it's a third party, I looked into a third party payback, that they paid the money to, so, yeah, I think it. So I had to get the, yeah, we got a camera, what if it's a problem? Thank you, Thomas. Uh, motion to approve the agenda as amended, some of which, Chair, can you accept it? Second, are the agenda as been approved as amended. First on our list this evening. Oh, sorry. All of them said aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number one presentation has been brought. With us tonight, we have Reverend Kevin James, who's retiring from Salem Baptist Church. Um, I met Reverend James a few years ago, he's been instrumental in the county in many situations. So he's been, he's been a true steward, and tells truth to his word, not only as a man of the cloth, but as a member of this community. So I have a resolution for you. If you come forward.
Good evening, Pastor James for tonight. Um, I, I know you're gonna be missed, and I know for, for decades you've been a, a rock in the Sparta region. It is a great pleasure that we get to present you, before you move into your next phase of life, a resolution for Caroline County. This is a resolution honoring Reverend Kevin James upon his retirement as lead pastor of Salem Baptist Church. Whereas Reverend Kevin James recently announced his retirement as lead pastor of Salem Church in Sparta after thirty three years of service. And whereas Reverend James was born and raised in Winchester, Virginia, and graduated from the University of Southern Baptist Theological Seminary in Louisville, Kentucky. Whereas after serving as an associate pastor at Braddock Baptist Church in Alexandria, Virginia for eighteen months. Reverend James accepted the invitation to become pastor of Salem Baptist Church. And whereas, since his arrival in nineteen eighty nine. Reverend James has held, has led his church through a period of tremendous growth. That has included hiring the first part-time and full-time youth pastor, completing three years of fine dusting. Fundraising, a fundraising program that built a fellowship hall and paved the church parking lot for the first time ever. Purchasing the first church van and bus, renovating a sanctuary, and completing the experiencing God and the purpose driven life. Programs that change the way the church makes all decisions. And whereas. The reach of the church has extended well beyond Caroline County to the nation and to the world's ambitions. In the southwest, in southwest Virginia, Florida, Mississippi, and Louisiana for hurricane relief. Tennessee, Georgia, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, New York City, Haiti, Thailand, and Italy for community, community ministry. Ten plus years of vacation Bible school and community ministry in the Bahamas. And a construction ministry in the Ivory Coast of Africa for ten years and counting. And whereas Salem Baptist Church has thrived under Reverend James's leadership as lead pastor and has served as a beacon of hope. And a pillar of stability and service to its congregation, community in Caroline County for more than three decades. Whereas in midst of all this activity and accomplishment, Reverend James still found time to serve as a longtime volunteer, Spartan volunteer fire department. Now therefore being resolved, Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its most sincere appreciation, appreciation to Reverend Kevin James for his dedicated and outstanding service to Salem Baptist Church in Caroline County. Congratulating him upon his retirement and wishes him the very best in the future. Adopted this day, the fourteenth of December, signed by Charles M. Colley, Clerk Ford, and Reginald Underwood, Board Chair. Congratulations, Pastor James.
We don't, we don't need to adopt a, a resolution. That'd be, just say, I move the adoption.
I, I move the adoption of the resolution second. All in favor?
Down.
Um, well, first let's say thank you, and also say God makes glory for everything you read on this, that could play a small part. Have the privilege to serve this with great people. At Salem and in the county, in schools, in school board. One of the, one of the treasures of smaller community is that you get to be a part of those things instead of just one number. So it's been a privilege to serve a lot of you, you folks, um, and, uh, be a part of what I think is a great county. Caroline, I know it, but, but. To those it deserves, but it is, is a great place to live, it's a great place to serve, and as you read here, we can make. Y'all keep in good work we're doing, and remember we have a very special place here. God bless you guys, and thank you very much.
It should be duly noted how brief I was.
With us tonight, we have.
There's probably a sermon in there somewhere.
With us tonight, we have, Mr. President, Commissioner Revenue, he and I talked, and he's gonna give us an update on, uh, some of the ordinances that have changed and how it impacts. The citizens of the county and things that the board should be aware of. So, Mr. President, thank, thank you for coming.
Good evening, Chair, Board, and Staff, Citizens. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recap the ordinances that have been brought to attention this year from my office. We, and when I say we, I am referring to this board, county administration, and my office have worked very much to address some matters. That have been strong concern for many of our constituents for some time now. As a result of my staff being able to monitor and punch data utilizing our modest streamline technique. And compare how other locality sets similar functions of my office, we have been able to successfully address these matters. More detail on the following will be given in the brief slide presentation. So just to recap what we're getting ready to see. The first ordinance matter that you will see was not a change, but rather a new adoption of an ordinance by way of a state mandate. To allow for the one hundred percent exemption of one vehicle or truck for a qualifying veteran. The second ordinance matter changes the county's filing requirements for, for property. The third topic of ordinance changes addresses, changes addresses several business professional occupational license pack issues, otherwise known as BFOs. This included a change in the growth receipt threshold.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Presentation, Bob.
Oh, no, um, this is just a bullet point introduction, and then Dave is gonna come up and go through his slides.
Yeah.
Very briefly.
Thank you.
I'm just giving a brief rundown on what we're getting ready to see. The, um, we're removing the requirement of obtaining a vendor and promoter license, two particular rate changes, there was a minor ancillary cleanup. Fourth topic is a program administered by my real estate department, and it addresses changes for the L. Lane Handicap Act, we're important. We will now move to the brief slide presentation that gives a little more detail on the one addition and other changes that have been adopted. In the essence of time, I would ask that you please hold all questions until the end, and we can go back to any slide and address it at that time. I'll now bring up David Watson, he created this slideshow, and will explain in a little bit more brief detail.
Thank you. Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Presentation, so this is, like Mark said, this is an update from twenty twenty one, all of the ordinance changes that have brought to your attention, September. So the first one is gonna be for personal property, this is the disabled veterans exemption. So this was the state mandated exemption, fifty eight point one dash three six six eight, which allows one motor vehicle owned regularly used by a qualified and disabled veteran spouse to be exempt from personal property taxes. The local administration process was adopted by the board on August tenth of twenty twenty one, to create accounting code section one oh three dash three six point six. The effective date is January first of twenty twenty one, this was mandated by state. We currently have a hundred and thirty seven qualifying veterans in the program. The application process of how to qualify. Must be certified by the Department of Veterans, you may have a hundred percent service connected permanently for release. An application must be completed, signed, submitted to the Commissioner of Revenue's office. A copy of the most recent summary of benefits letter certifying disability must be attached with the application. The exemption is applied from the effective date of the disability or January first, twenty twenty one, whichever is later. Transferring the exemption to a new vehicle. Qualifying change must occur in order to change the motor vehicle. Qualifying changes include purchase of a new vehicle, or the sale, trade-in, or replacement of the currently exempt vehicle. New application must be submitted by the veteran in order to transfer the exemption. The exemption does not automatically transfer to the new vehicle. I will say that we do keep track of these vehicles, so when someone sells or purchases the vehicle, we do try to reach out to them to make sure they give an application from them. Comparison to the reduced rate program. So the definitions differ slightly from the definition of a motor vehicle between two programs. For the exemption, it's only a passenger car or pickup or panel truck. For the reduced rate, it can be any non-commercial motor vehicle, so this would include RVs and motorcycles. A veteran owned, a vehicle owned by a spouse to be primarily for the disabled veteran also allowed to be exempt, but not to be included in the reduced rate program. Disabled veterans meet qualifications for the exemption, or also meet the requirement of this rate, although they are not permitted to be in both programs simultaneously. And we do have a handful of veterans that do qualify for the exemption, but they get a better discount on the reduced rate for an RV, so we do allow them to do that. The next change is gonna be for personal property again, this is filed by exception. So this ordinance amendment is adopted by the board on September fourteenth of twenty twenty one. The changes will become effective January first of twenty twenty two. This removes the requirement to complete an annual personal property filing form for motor vehicles, trailers, and boats. All other types of property must still be filed and uploaded. A filing for motor vehicles, trailers, boats, all required, the status occurs, but also must be made within sixty days of that change. What is considered a change in substance? The purchase or acquisition of a new piece of property, a change of. A purchase or acquisition of a new piece of property, a change in name with a current owner of the property, a change in ownership, for example adding and removing a joint owner, property moves into Caroline County, property moves out of Caroline County. Of course, in this example, the late piece would be charged by Caroline, it could very well be charged by the new locale. A change in use of the vehicle from a personal business, there would need to be more than 50% business use, the risk would disqualify the vehicle from receiving personal property tax. What do you mean by that? Accepted filings directed to the Commissioner's office will be written notification by way of mail, email, fax, or delivery in person, verbal notification in person or by way of phone, or submission of changes using the forms located in the Commissioner's office. We will also accept changes reported to Virginia DMP from other vehicles and trailers and the Department of Wildlife Resources formerly known as AAM and then when proposed as filings. The sixty-nine notification requirement system apply. We do receive updated data on a weekly and a semi-annual and annual basis from both departments to keep track of these. So if somebody does notify them, we're going to know that we did that. What types of property do I file annually? All businesses will continue to be mailed an annual filing form in late December of each year. Business equipment, machinery and tools, farm equipment, mobile homes, and aircraft are still covered under the rules of file or are not covered under the rules but filed by exception. They must still be filed on an annual filing form due back by February first. Late filing penalties still exist. For property covered under filed by exception, penalty of ten percent or ten dollars, whichever is rated, will still be assessed if the filing or notification is not made within sixty days after a change in status. For property requiring to be filed annually, a penalty of ten percent or ten dollars, whichever is rated, will still be assessed to the entire equipment. In either case, the penalty cannot exceed the total tax. So for example, if your total tax is six dollars or anything other than ten dollars, it would match the total tax. High mileage discounts. Documentation, for example state inspections, oil change records, receipt for repair can be turned in at any time for the current prior tax years. Documentation must be dated January first of the tax year or prior in order to qualify for that year. The vehicle does not need to have more than a hundred thousand miles in order to apply for a discount. So for example, if you have a twenty twenty Toyota Prius and it has sixty thousand miles, you can turn in that mileage and you could very well receive a discount for that. Adjustments are based on the mileage tables located JD Power or better known for their name, MAA, used car guidebook. If your vehicle is more than twenty years old, you do not need to submit documentation because the guidebook only just put the twenty years run, so if the vehicle's older than that, we will not have a mileage table to base it off of. The mileage also caps out, mileage tables also cap out at two hundred and fifty thousand miles, so once you exceed that, there's no need to turn in any more mileage documentation. Moving on to business licenses, this is the gross receipts and rate changes. Ordinance amendments were adopted by the Board on November ninth of twenty twenty-one. The changes will become effective one one of twenty twenty-two. The gross receipt threshold for local business license tax increased from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars. The contractor tax rate increased from twelve cents per hundred dollars in gross receipts to thirteen cents per hundred dollars in gross receipts. The service tax rate increased from nineteen cents per hundred dollars in gross receipts to twenty-two cents per hundred dollars in gross receipts. Here's some examples of the changes, so you can see moving down from top to bottom. For example, in twenty twenty-one, thresholds would have been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if that contract had made two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in gross prior year, the tax rate would have been the twelve cents per hundred dollars, and that would have came out to three hundred dollars in total tax. For twenty twenty-two, the threshold would change to three hundred thousand, that same contractor with the same gross receipts of two hundred and fifty. Even though the tax rate increased, they have not crossed the threshold of repayment, so there would be zero dollar owed in that scenario. So in twenty twenty-one, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold again, if that contract now means three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one at a tax rate of twelve cents per hundred, they would be paying four hundred and twenty dollars. And then in twenty twenty-two, the threshold being three hundred thousand, that same contractor may be the same three hundred and fifty thousand, would now cross that threshold of repayment and at thirteen cents per hundred dollars would owe four hundred and fifty-five dollars, difference of thirty-five dollars. Now moving on to business licenses, the vendor and promoter licenses. These ordinance amendments were signed by the Board on November ninth of twenty twenty-one. These will also become effective January first of twenty twenty-two. This removes the requirement for local license business license tax for inter-emergent vendors, more commonly referred to as vendors. Remove the requirement for event organizers to pay a license tax based on the number of vendors attending the event. The new language still requires that all event organizers provide a list of all vendors attending prior to the start of the event. How does this affect events in Caroline? Vendors will no longer have to obtain a license to pay a minimum of thirty dollars per year. Any person or entity organizing events in Caroline must submit a list of vendors to Commissioner Revenue's office before the start of the event. List must include the name, trade name, social or federal ID number, mailing address, contact information of all vendors attending. Vendor lists will be used to follow up the food and beverage tax and the one percent sales tax distribution that comes back to Caroline County. Moving on to real estate, this is the L. Will allow the late filing, first files, improvement charging cases with Commissioner Revenue approval up to December thirty-first of that tax year. This also allows relief to prorating based on a percentage of ownership, if the property is owned jointly and not all the owners fall for the relief. Example, contracts, please. Sorry. Award letter if under the age of sixty-five, W-two earnings statement, W-two pension income statement, Social Security ten ninety-nine, supplemental Social Security income, proof of public assistance, railroad retirement statement, statement of annuity paid, ten ninety-nine miscellaneous income, ten ninety-nine lottery winnings, business income or rents, Veterans Affairs benefit letter. These are most of the common examples we see, but there there could be more income documents that may be needed in in a particular case. Examples of net worth documents. So before we get into them, this is, so the primary residence of up to ten acres, the same primary residence in ten acres that would be included in the relief are not to be included in calculating net worth. So on the asset side, some examples would include checking savings account, personal property and real estate other than the primary residence, certificate of deposits, stocks and savings bonds, 401K and IRA. On the liability side, these would include things like personal loans, credit card debt, vehicle loans, mortgages other than the primary, delinquent taxes due, and medical bills. So calculating the percentage relief, twenty twenty-one and prior, what we currently do. So for example, in this example, we're going to assume that we've gathered all the income documents and we've come out to twenty-five thousand dollars of total income. And on the net worth side, we have sixty thousand dollars. So the current process, both of these would be used to calculate the percentage relief. So on the income side, we would want to follow that column down and it would be between twenty thousand and one and thirty thousand dollars. And then on the net worth side, it would of course be between forty-five thousand and one and eighty-five thousand. So where those two meet would give them a percentage relief of forty percent. Carrying that over and applying that percentage relief to the taxes for the current method. And these calculations assume that the total acreage is not more than ten acres, additional acreage is assessed in taxes normal. So in the first example, let's say that their house and land is assessed at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, with the current tax rate being seventy-seven cents per hundred, the original total annual tax would have been thirteen forty-seven fifty. We carry over the forty percent relief and the relief amount would come to five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, making the adjusted total annual tax eight oh eight fifty. In example two, we're going to assume that their residence, their home and their land is four hundred thousand dollars at the same tax rate. The original total tax would be three thousand and eighty dollars, we carry over that forty percent relief. Now the reason that this is a thousand dollars is that is the CAC, that is the most relief that can be given. So this, the four hundred thousand would exceed that, so we have to give that limit, the thousand dollar limit. So this would bring the adjusted total annual tax down to two thousand and eighty dollars. And that's just your footnote there to explain. All right, calculating percentage relief after twenty twenty-one, so this would be the newly adopted ordinances going into this. All we would be doing with the net worth, net worth is just making sure that they fall under the threshold. This is not going to be used in the calculation of the percentage, only the income is going to be used in the calculation. So once we verify their income and net worth are under the limits and they meet those two criteria, we can move to just using the income for the percentage calculation. So you can see in this case, they, instead of receiving forty, moving into twenty twenty-two, if their situation doesn't change, they would receive sixty percent relief. Now using that in the same way for the percentage relief, signage relief, same thing applies if it's more than ten acres, then those additional acres would be taxed as normal. So same numbers from the last examples, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, we're going to assume that the tax rate has stayed the same for twenty twenty-two, and that would come out to thirteen forty-seven fifty. Now they would receive sixty percent, giving them a relief amount of eight oh eight fifty and a total tax, annual tax of five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Example number two, same thing, four hundred thousand dollars, we're going to assume again that the tax rate stays the same for twenty twenty-two, the original tax would be three thousand and eighty dollars, and the sixty percent would also take them to the cap limit of a thousand dollars. So the same thing, total annual tax, two thousand and eighty dollars. And that concludes the presentation, I would pass it back over to Mark for closing statements.
Did anyone have any particular questions on any slide?
You know, Mark, I'll let you. Mr. Forrent, any questions regarding the presentation?
No sir.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
I have one question and one comment. On the disabled, the vehicle one, that was the state, so can you just go over with me again, if a disabled veteran switches vehicles, they're exempt right now, what is the process again? Because you said it wasn't automatic, so what is, what do they need to do to get exempt on that new vehicle that they're switching to?
Yeah, so like I said, we try to keep, we keep very close track of them, so when we see, we have queries set up to let us know when somebody sells a qualified vehicle, so we try to reach out to them proactively, let them know, hey, we see you sold it, we need a new application. We do not need any of their veteran's documentation, we just need a new application and they're going to sign off on the new vehicle.
So when you, you said you see that, will you send something to them, you need a new application or is that?
Yeah, well either if we have their contact information, we'll either reach out to by phone and see if they would like one mail or email, or if we don't have their their phone number, we will try to either use a email or just mail them out a new application. And we'll try to pre-fill it with the new vehicle information as well.
Yeah, okay, because I could see some questions coming over that. Finally, the only thing I have is that was excellent, that was excellent information right there. Mr. Parton, and I don't know who does the county website, but I think that'd be something that is very informative that could be put up on the county website, so that way people can, we can point constituents in that direction. Rather than having to call you and have it sent to them directly, we could just point them to the county website. So thank you very much, that was very important.
That's one thing we're going to try to do moving forward into twenty twenty-two, is work on our our portion of the website to get more fillable forms, more information like that out there, and try to use every avenue that we can to get information out to people that we feel is beneficial.
Mr. Basoon?
I just want to thank Mr. Basoon and and his whole office for the recap. A lot of times people see these individually done at board meetings and don't know what they really mean, so I think the recap and the and the and the actual process really did help, so I just want to thank you and your office for that.
Mrs. Long? Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Basoon, the disabled veterans, to differentiate the two, the exemption and the reduced rate, the reduced rate is the county version, right?
Yes sir, state code, state code has the two sections available to the locality, one by mandate, which is the new one, and then it always had the reduced rate program that a locality could adopt. And this board moved forward with that a couple of years ago to help our veteran community. So both programs are in play for those that qualify for each one. And when they come in, we will gladly help them and explain to them, you know, which one may be better suited, because like David said, there are some people that aren't the hundred percent that could receive a whole exemption on a vehicle, but they own a RV, which could participate in the reduced rate program, and they get a break on their tax bill because the RV is more, you know, more expensive or produces a higher tax bill, so they chose this program over here, so.
But I just recall that when, when I asked the Board to consider that, when we had the chance to do that, it's actually more open than the state mandated because it allows you to use RVs and motorcycles.
I can tell you throughout the Commissioner of Revenues Association, Caroline County's pretty unique in allowing this for our veteran community, and that's in a great thanks to you all and your diligence in looking into that for our veterans. So yes, we are a little bit unique in having both programs, we're not the only ones, but we're a very small percentage that does that.
That that came from a citizen who who called me and said I was disabled and I know we can do this, so the Board decided to do it, so I thanks, thanks for your help in doing it.
Good work on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Basoon, thank you, I think we had a number of conversations and I really appreciate you and your staff taking the opportunity to update us as well as the community to make sure that they have the opportunity to take advantage of some of the programs and they really understand what it means for them as the taxpayer. So certainly I appreciate you and hope to see you before this Board next year.
Well, I want to thank you for having that conversation with me and allowing us this time, and I want to thank County Admin, the legal team, and my staff for putting this together. I wouldn't be able to do it without all of them and more especially for you all listening and taking the step to do these things for the citizens, so thank you for helping me out with that and I thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Basoon. It's, the Board remembers last February, I believe I had asked the Department of Heads for the county to come before us and discuss their goals and how it would impact the citizens of Caroline County and hopefully didn't have to cost you money, just wanted to know what those goals were. So to, next on the agenda, we're going to have an update from Department Heads on their goals for twenty twenty-one. Mr. Chiu.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As I have two departments, I've got four goals, so two for Public Works and two for Public Utilities. So the Department of Public Works goals were to construct the Ladysmith Convenience Site as a relocation from its existing site. So as part of that, so far we have done a studies, did a site selection, the Board has secured the funds to be able to do that, and then we've been working, negotiating on property. So there is a fairly good chance that we may get the property for free instead of having to pay for that, so we've been working with Gary Wilson's office towards that. So it's been slightly delayed because of that, and we are trying to diligently move forward, so we've already got the contract in place to be able to design the facility once we know that this will be the site that we'll be able to to get, so we're working towards that. The second goal in Public Works was the construction of the Carmel Church Fire Station. Again, the Board of Supervisors has secured funding on that. We are ninety percent done with the design, they've been submitted to Mr. Whitman's office for the fire station for a cursory review, to see if we can make sure we can get anything that might be out there. My department's also reviewing that, we've already submitted a site plan for planning, that's been completed, it's been submitted to DEQ as well as to VDOT for their review. So we'll be moving forward, we're still on schedule trying to get that RFB out for January. Public Utilities, we had two goals in there, one was the Ladysmith Service Area Sewer Improvements, the Board of Supervisors secured the funding on that. We have started design on the thirty-inch interceptor from the wastewater treatment plant to the rest area, we are about thirty-five percent complete on that design, surveying is a big piece of that. They've also started the the surveying of Phase Two, which is from the rest area to the behind the Exxon Station at Ladysmith on Route One, and we're about sixty percent complete. complete on the pump, South River Pump Station upgrade and design. So we're moving forward with that very well. The second, uh, goal for public utilities was for the well development in the Carmel Church and Ladysmith area. Um, happy to say that we also have funding on that. We are in design currently for a green sand filter water treatment facility in the Pendleton area. We've drilled one well, we've got another, uh, well scheduled to drill in January, and then we've got another site that we're looking at and will be working with DEQ to drill the third well there. So that project is coming along very well. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Board, have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Chiebel. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Mr. Finch, if you, if you'd be a gentleman and let Ms. Smith come before us, if you would.
Of course.
And Miss Upshaw's after her, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. The first goal for the Finance Department was to create more strategic budgeting and planning measurements by constructing a multi-year budget. Um, we had geared that, that first goal to starting with a two-year and then moving forward with a five to ten-year, um, budget system. This goal was to be accomplished with the addition of a budget analyst position to assist in the forecasting models and analytics. Finance has not moved forward with this goal at this time and does not anticipate being able to move forward with this goal without additional staff. Our second goal was to compile a more transparent and detailed annual comprehensive fi- financial report. Our fiscal year twenty-one report will include additional statistical tables and notes, providing more historic data for the reader. The county has not received the certificate of achievement in the financial reporting program from the Government Finance Officers Association, known as GFOA. In the past, however, this year's report will be submitted to the GFOA in hopes of being awarded the certificate. Jason Udo from Robinson Farmer Cox will be here to present the county's financial report to the board on January eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions, board members?
I do have.
Mr. Thomas?
Just a kudos again, and, and I can't say this enough, but I wanted to thank Mrs. Smith for putting together that, that five-year audit, which all the board members got it. I know for me, I found it enlightening, so I, you know, appreciate the hard work it took to get that done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. What's up, Shaw?
Good evening, board members. Um, our first goal for the library was to increase our spending in eBooks and, uh, e-materials. So far, we have been doing additional purchases of popular titles to make sure that library patrons can, don't have to wait so long for their holds. Um, we've also, uh, started an advantage plan with Overdrive, which is our eBook provider, so that library patrons are first on the list for those titles that we purchase. They just go to Caroline Library card holders. Um, additionally, I don't think it's in the goals, but we, uh, some of the ARPA money that we received from the state has gone to eBook purchases as well. These are predominantly for workforce development, uh, educational things, so, uh, test-taking, GRE, ASVAB, those kinds of things, we purchased materials for that. Our second goal was to increase some spending for our programming budget. Um, so far, we haven't been able to really increase that because of the COVID-nineteen levels, um, but we have started back with our pre-K, uh, storytimes over at Bowling Green, uh, primary elementary school, and, uh, we are working with the state to increase some of our online, um, programming options, like Beanstack and for the summer reading challenge.
Any questions for Miss Upshaw? For our library, or?
She did the library, um, web hotspot, the web hotspots, which wasn't part of what it goes, but that was an extra thing, which was great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Miss Upshaw. Uh, Mr. Finch?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The department had, uh, two goals, one for the planning side and one for the building side, uh, this past year. Uh, let me start with the building side first. Um, every couple of years, we're required to, uh, go through an update and the code cycle, uh, from the, uh, Uniform Statewide Building Code, um, which involves significant training of, of staff, uh, and then education for, uh, contractors, uh, working in the community. I'm pleased to report that Mr. Whitman and his staff, uh, were able to successfully complete the code update process, uh, including all the training that was required of, of Mr. Whitman and, and his personnel, uh, and to provide the, the code update to contractors in the county, uh, to get them familiar with the, with the new, uh, code requirements. Second goal was, uh, for, for the planning side, uh, to, uh, coordinate the, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-thirty, uh, county redistricting process. Um, as the board was, uh, updated last month, um, there were a number of delays at, at several levels. First, with the census data, and then secondly, with the Commonwealth of Virginia actually adopting the new legislative districts, uh, that they have to adopt before local, localities can adopt their regulations. If Caroline County had been fortunate enough to only be in one district, we could have had our process completed by now. The Virginia Supreme Court, which is now, uh, taking over the redistricting process in the Commonwealth, um, has advertised, uh, a draft, um, uh, district maps, uh, for public hearing. Uh, I can tell you, uh, that while we are still a split locality, it would appear that the number of representatives, uh, will be reduced from three to two, um, which will help make our process, um, a little bit easier. Uh, there are still some challenges. Uh, Mr. Degg and I have been working through the data, uh, developing options, uh, to look at, uh, and, um, I think, uh, we're, we're very close to having some, uh, maps to, uh, provide to board, um, and, and to public for, for your consideration. Um, I would expect us to have, uh, discussions in earnest in January concerning the redistricting process, uh, and look forward to presenting that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Yep, one question. Yes.
Mr. Finch, and I know this is, uh, past, but, um, one of the things I think that we really need to work on for next year is, and I think it's been worked on for about a decade, is I think we really, really need to start looking at the comprehensive plan again.
Yes, sir.
I think it's, it's time, it's, it's, uh, and going back to it, it's, it's a decade old, and county is changing very, very quickly, and I like to be able to refer to that, and as we evolve, I mean, that's, I like to see certain areas the county develop in certain, certain ways, and I'd like to have a plan to go by that's more than a decade old.
Yes, sir. We, uh, will be having some proposals for you to consider, uh, as part of that process, but that'll be a major goal next year.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Chief Loftus?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, two goals for fire rescue. One, the Carmel Church Station, as Mr. Chiebel talked about. Uh, for us, eighty-seven percent of the call volume is in Bowling Green and Ladysmith together. Carmel Church will help alleviate some of that call volume, uh, and get some faster response in the areas of the county with the highest number of incidents. The second piece of that is staffing, and in this fiscal year and in last fiscal year, we were not able to add any additional staff to ease the burden when that Carmel Church Station opens. Uh, and also because of that, uh, we need additional backfill. Uh, we have seen, uh, very few part-time people work anymore, and we're overburdening our staff right now with overtime. We have already this year over five thousand hours of overtime on callbacks. So, uh, that staffing piece is the second goal, uh, and we will be requesting a very large number of staff, uh, this year to fill that Carmel Church Station and address the overtime staffing issue.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Thomas? Chief, has the, um, the new salary plan helped with staffing, or, or you see more needs?
It, it has helped, and the, the plan, um, is keeping folks here. Uh, one of our issues right now, we can't get part-time. We rely very heavily on part-time to fill vacancies, uh, when people take an annual leave and such. With everybody else's pay plans going up, and with everybody else having to pay large amounts of overtime to keep folks staff, we're not seeing that part-time availability anymore. Second to that is, because of COVID and a variety of other pressures, we're seeing a lot of folks leave the profession, and we're not seeing very many people apply. We had three openings, we had two people apply. So we are running up against very long periods of time where we're still trying to advertise and hire folks to get them on there, because there's just nobody there. Caroline is not by itself, every other department around us, from Stafford all the way down to Chesterfield, is having that same issue.
All right, if you've got whatever ideas you can come up with, um, one-time sign-on bonuses or things of that nature, what, that we can just get more people, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, in our budget, we're asking for one training lieutenant, and for us, we're going to start bringing people, hiring people that have absolutely no fire service background. We will give you everything you need here locally, train you, give you EMT, give you firefighter, and then put you to work. Uh, that will broaden our pool of who we can look at. We've never been able to do that, you've always got to come pre-hire or pre-train chief.
It's a good idea, yeah.
Any other board members have questions for Chief Loftus?
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it.
One question. You said you were going to ask for a significant number? Yes. What's that number look like? Nineteen. Nineteen, okay. Uh, did you break that down for you? That's an ambulance, uh, company at the new station, that's an engine company, a dedicated engine company with three, one training lieutenant, and then three people for backfill. Right now, we have one person, uh, per every eleven people for backfill. Okay. All right, thank you.
Chief, did you say nine or nineteen?
That would be a one-nine, nineteen.
Okay.
And again, we, we tried to ease into that, the last couple of years of asking for staffing, that wasn't available, so we're, we're looking at opening a new station. We're looking at twenty-five percent more call volume since the last time we put staff on.
He just couldn't. I mean, that nineteen has been in your budget, well, not nineteen, but you had.
We, we had sixteen in there, I had to add the three backfill because the overtime is going to pay for that, you know, ideally, so.
Thank you, Chief Loftus.
Volunteer is just on where you get to be.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Economic Development, uh, two goals. The first was recruit industry to an existing site that the department had insisted to bring to a state of readiness for sale. Particularly, uh, an issue for the county, because they're, all our sites are privately owned, uh, and we need our landowners to step up to do the things that are required to make them sale ready, such as do studies, clear the site, uh, and so forth. The result has been a success. VA MAC has been recruited to the Carmel Church Business Center, creating a hundred thousand square foot warehouse space, twenty jobs and a six million dollar investment. That construction should start in twenty-two. Uh, and Flint Development has purchased Caroline Commerce Center pursuant to building a one-point-one million square foot building, uh, for a seventy million dollar investment with the likelihood of ultimately creating five hundred jobs. Uh, both landowners have worked with Economic Development to make their sites ready for sale, and a third landowner is also in the process of selling their site for an additional one-point-five million square feet of investment, uh, and that's ongoing as we speak, and they have also cooperated with us to do the things that are required to make their property sale-ready. The second goal was to place real estate under option that can be turned into a viable site for business recruitment within two thousand twenty-one calendar year. Uh, the county finds this especially important, uh, as we have noted in the first, uh, goal, uh, sites aren't ready. This helped us establish a site that was ready. The result has been success. The Good Earth property, uh, is under option to the county EDA, and during two thousand twenty-one, the site has become more viable for sale. Result is the contract is near closing, um, for an industrial developer who plans on building a large structure there. Their initial investment will probably exceed fifty million dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Mr. Black?
Um, Mr. Wilson, I, I look forward to next year and the comprehensive plan, you being a key part of that too, so we'll get into that document while we're, okay?
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Howard? What's that? Yeah. That's what I wanted to do, because I'm a dealer here, but we're actually shorthanded from the county side. Yeah. You know, but we, we have too many single points up there, again, I'm going to. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Mr. Brown, Mr. Sealy, all this evening. Uh, back in February, I presented two goals to involve, and one was related to family offering family support services in the form of a before and after-care program. And. All right. All right. I can look for it. I, I was, I was sharing with you that back in February, uh, I came forward and I presented two goals to, to you all, and, uh, one was related to, uh, providing family support services in the form of before and after-care program. Uh, the second was dealing with increasing or enhancing, uh, web, web services or internet services, uh, to better promote and market Parks and Recreation Services offer. Uh, I would say to you tonight that, uh, progress has been made in both areas, however, not to point of satisfaction at this point, uh, in terms of the, uh, what, what has been done so far for the, uh, family support services. We hired, uh, someone to work the program, and it's been very challenging to try to find qualified applicant to do just that, uh, but we have hired, uh, I have had staff to, uh, publicize the, the program through putting up a thirty, almost three thousand or so, uh, activity guides into the school system and to make them, make the parents aware, and we've also distributing that information, uh, to, and within our youth basketball program as well, just trying to get the information out there, uh, to, to attract those parents, letting them know that the services are made available to them. Uh, so right now, we're just constantly just waiting and constantly just trying to encourage folks to take advantage of the services. As far as the webmaster or the web, uh, services that we're trying to attain, uh, that's on the agenda tonight. I sent in, along with some of the other county, uh, employees, and we sat in and we had a consultation, uh, through the vendor and so forth, and educate, got educated on the system, and so therefore, we're at the point right now that, as you see, it's on the agenda for tonight, uh, to, to come forward and hopefully, uh, get the blessing on that so we can go forward and, uh, to gain the benefits from that. So that's what we are.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any, Mr. Sealy?
I want to say that I was able to facilitate a group, a theater group, that actually has youth performers that we're putting, actually doing plays in Fredericksburg. Most of the folks were from Caroline. They did not realize there was a theater group, a theater being taught in Parks and Rec, and in the meeting, which I was able to attend with all these folks. They all marveled at the things that they learned in this meeting that the county had available, because none of them were able to figure out where to learn all this from, even though it's handed out and given out, and so, uh, in this day and time of everybody gets a ton of information, whether it's printed or online, getting everybody to read it is really getting to be tougher and tougher, because I think we're all inundated with things on a regular basis. But I will say, I think that, uh, Parks and Rec is going to be able to merge these two groups and have a very successful, um, much larger program with much longer reach. I just wanted to thank him and his staff for taking all the time they did to talk with those folks and facilitate that.
Thank you, Sealy. Anyone's having comment? Thank you, Mr. Howard.
My pleasure, thank you.
Um, for the board, I'm sorry, call Mr. Sattler, IT, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Earlier this year, uh, I presented to you two goals for the IT department, one being an improvement, uh, in our local backup system, uh, and as it's related to security of our network. Uh, unfortunately, with supply chain issues, the parts necessary to fulfill this job or complete this goal, uh, are still unavailable, but we continue to monitor that. Related to that same supply chain issue, currently, we're having trouble meeting the demands, uh, of the departments as far as computers and related equipment, so we continue to work towards purchasing that, that, uh, those supplies ahead of time, so that we have them actually in stock, uh, when they are needed by the departments. The second goal was to improve the internet access, um, at the Frog Global Fire Station, uh, to allow us to have internet there as a backup EOC. Um, and unfortunately, um, we continue to monitor the opportunities available to improve that, however, that's changing as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the IT department? Thank you. Mr. Sealy?
Mr. S. I know he wasn't valid.
Um, moving forward, uh, the Commissioner's Office, believe it or not, by changing these ordinances that we worked on this year, um, will allow my staff to reintroduce ourselves to the business community. Um, more importantly, the, uh, willingness to open a door for outside businesses to come in and participate in more events in the county without pull and tug and different things like that. So one mission that I have is to reintroduce the Commissioner's Office to our business community and educate them on the things that we have going on now, communicate with them that point zero-zero-one-two is the tax rate. It's twelve cent on the hundred, not twelve percent, you know, so, because we, I've had that conversation with several people.
Big difference.
And, 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 and it is a huge difference. Um, so opening lines of communication with that. We're gonna be trying to work on our webpage. And I have two initiatives to track our state tax revenue base. We are currently conducting studies and, um, in the essence of, uh, security and not divulging certain things. Um, I can't say too much, but we have some concerns and we're going to be addressing that. And by changing some of these ordinances to relieve some of the arbitrary things that we've been doing, will now allow my staff and myself to, uh, address some of these matters. So the most important thing is to reintroduce the Commissioner's Office to our business community and our state tax initiative to make sure that we're working diligently with the state and that the state is working diligently with us when we let them know things that, um, that, that need to happen, you know? My job is not to create revenue, it's to make sure that the county is receiving revenues owed. And at the end of the day, it better serves everybody, most importantly, our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. S. Did I, did I miss any department? Um, for the board and for the citizens, this really was a, um, something that I wanted to fold. One is that we very seldomly hear from the people working in the county who are responsible for some of our departments. So I thought it was a good opportunity for, for some of you, for an introduction of those folks who are responsible for some of the services within the county. Second, I wanted the board and the citizens to realize that within the county's structure, we have many single points of failure. From two thousand nine until we had the housing bust and the county had a reduction in force. Many people that were here in some capacity, they're no longer here. And we have to make sure that we have the people available to do the work, to provide the services that you require. So I think it's important for this board to go back and take a look again at our single points of failure. We have people that can retire any day if they chose to do so. And we need to make sure that we have a backup plan for anyone who chooses to retire. And unfortunately, we have, we have not done a good job with backfilling. So I think it's an opportunity to us to continue to look at what are the goals for each department, how we best can facilitate those and to ensure that we have, and we do away with single points of failure within the county. So that was part of the purpose and rationale for this, uh, board intro. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the review of the twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three employee, uh, health benefit and dental. Mr. Pardon?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's time once again to, uh, make decisions regarding the county's employee medical and dental benefits. The current plan year will, uh, come to an end on February twenty-second, uh, twenty-two. And since we need time to, uh, hold open enrollment meetings and, uh, get, get, uh, employees signed up for the new plan year, uh, prior to March first, we, uh, always ask for a decision at this meeting if possible. Unfortunately, the current year has been a rough one and the renewal news is, is frankly bad this year. We've had nine claims, uh, over twenty-five thousand, uh, four of which have exceeded the hundred thousand dollar stop loss. When reinsurance kicks in and, as you would expect, it's very expensive. Uh, when you combine that with the year-over-year, uh, trend, uh, uh, the trend results in healthcare costs, it results in a recommendation of a twenty-two percent, uh, increase, uh, over the, the current year. Dental coverage is flat, but that's a very small percentage of the cost of providing, uh, medical and dental insurance. So in terms of dollars, uh, it means that the county and employees, uh, will have to come up with an additional, uh, nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, uh, more for medical coverage next plan year with the current plans remaining in place. Working with Mary Jones of One Digital, our consultant staff has provided four options in the board packet for your consideration, all of which spread the cost, uh, out, uh, the increase out amongst both the county and employees. Uh, you have in the packet the attachments that are behind the executive summary that give you the total estimated additional cost to the county and also break down the individual cost to employees on a monthly basis, uh, depending on whether they, they, uh, select the healthkeepers or, uh, key care plan and which tier they're in. Uh, I won't say that any of the options are particularly good, uh, because of the size of the increase. We suggested that you take a look at option number four, uh, which is, uh, adds a five-hundred-dollar deductible. It gives the choice for a five-hundred-dollar deductible. And, uh, with that, uh, we hold the increase down to a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month, uh, for the family and employee plus children tier. And, uh, also, uh, to twenty-nine dollars, sixty-nine dollars, fifty-nine dollars in the employee only, employee plus spouse and employee plus one child, uh, tiers. Still a significant increase and Mr. Cully and I are both very concerned about that impact on employees, uh, both existing employees and our ability to retain them and our ability to recruit new employees. Our healthcare coverage and its cost has always, always been a selling point for us. We're, we're concerned about losing that. But having said that, um, when you have an increase this size, it, it can't, uh, all be borne by the county. Uh, even with option four, uh, that's an additional five-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars for the county that we'd ask the county to pick up next year. The bottom line is that just, there's just no good way to be able to absorb this increase, uh, without it impacting both, both, uh, the county and the employees. Uh, with that, uh, Mary Jones is, is here to help answer any questions about any of the options that were given.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, board members, any of your packet, you have options one through four. I don't know if you're taking the time to look at it, certainly. I think mostly you probably have. It, it is unfortunate that, um, costs are going to rise. And we're, we're gonna have to make a decision, um, and take into all factors when we make this decision.
Mr. End.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, could you please tell me, Alan, on number four, that option? I just want to make sure. Employees would have the choice of doing it with or without the deductible, correct? They would have a choice?
Correct.
And I'm not really surprised to see the increase as we were talking, the inflation factor alone is, is almost creating this.
I agree, Mrs. Long. Uh, anyone else have question or comment? Mr. Black?
Just, uh, what is under the current plan? What is the deductible? I mean, I guess you have two options, but what are the, what is the current deductible for? Because I mentioned, you, I see here you want a five-hundred-dollar, what would be the deductible for?
So currently on the healthkeepers plan, there is, there isn't a deductible.
Okay.
And on the key care plan, there's a five-hundred-dollar deductible.
Right. So they're, okay.
In healthkeepers. Correct, yeah.
Is that, I'll answer your question, Mr. Black.
Yes, it did.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, um, thanks again for being here. As usual, the, the basic difference between option three, which costs the county six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, and option four is just the cost to the county?
Correct. Yeah, so in option three, the county's picking up seventy-five percent of the increase. And in option four, the county's picking up sixty percent.
Okay, so option three means less impact to the employees.
Correct.
It's six-fifty-four versus?
Five-twenty-three.
Five-twenty-three. So a hundred and thirty thousand more with option three. I know, but.
And, and the real dilemma, I mean, it's gonna hit employ, and, and I have to go with Mr. Cully and, and Mr. Pardon. You know, the employee side of this, because I know that benefits become the, the situation that we all march to when people decide to either become employed or move somewhere else, which is, I'm sure as you've seen with other companies, that's the struggle is how do you keep as many people, training folks is expensive. You know, when you turn over people, you've got to retrain everybody and that all takes time, in some cases, years. So, e- either way, where it's gonna cost us, it's just, where do we want to put it?
Yeah, but, well. Yeah, I, I mean, uh, you know, on that point, I can't, I can't put a dollar figure on institutional laws too.
Right.
You know, I can train somebody to do almost what some of the people that spoke today can do, but I can't train somebody to know their twenty years of experience and what's gone on. So I'm all for doing whatever we can for the employees.
For the retain?
Yeah. As, as much as we can.
Mr. Ford, you have any comment regarding option one, two, three, or four, and?
Just, just mulling over between three and four.
Yeah, I like the fact that option four does give them some additional decisions, whether, whether they want the.
So does, so does three. So three and four give you the option of three plans?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I see that now, yeah.
Excuse me. Option one, I just want to double check, but option, option one is the, that would be the, even though it's most expensive to the county, it would be the best for the employee, correct?
That, that would be keeping the plans as they are taken and the county picking up seventy-five percent.
They would pay the twenty-five percent.
Yes, they, they would keep the percentage.
Sixty.
Yes. Right. They still pay more, but it keeps the percentage the same, just. I, I'll be honest, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of that option.
Option three or four? Option one?
Yes.
Okay. This, this is long.
Yeah, if I could, I don't think it's quite accurate to say it's a straight seventy-five, twenty-five, or sixty, forty because it depends on the program itself. So you can't look at one or two and say the percentage is the difference because it depends on how much the county is picking up if you're a single or a, a family or a, a single parent. So you can't look too much at the percentage. Look at the increases.
Also, Mr. Black, it's, um, is it like, like option one, three, three requires a five-hundred-dollar deductible?
No, they would have the option to stay with the plan that's available today.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Or, uh, purchase the one with five-hundred dollars, which would have a bigger premium savings or anything.
Yeah, just scrolled too far, I'm sorry. Mr. Cully?
Both three and four, the base plan the county would fund would be the five-hundred deductible plan. And you would buy up from there to the plan we currently have, the plan we currently have above that. So the base funded plan in three and four is a five-hundred-dollar deductible. Sorry, I just wanted to make that clear.
Oh.
Thank you.
It's not an optional plan. That becomes the base floor plan. I want you to pay more money if you don't have the five-hundred-dollar deductible.
So explain, explain, explain that in the chart.
Yeah, I'm gonna see it.
Because in the chart, okay, I'm at option three with the five-hundred-dollar deductible, employee and spouse.
My increase is thirty-one dollars. But I don't want that.
I don't want a five, oh, I don't want a five-hundred-dollar deductible. So I go to what's on the chart or I have to pay extra? The one on the chart?
The chart above.
Okay, you were saying something different, which sounded different than what you have to buy into it, but you're really using the chart we have? Okay.
The base, the, the base cheapest you can get is the five-hundred-dollar deductible.
Right.
Plan that, that is where we're basing them on. And so if you move to the other key care or the other plan, there are, you have more out pocket to turn for.
Right, but the one without the five-hundred-dollar deductible, the prices are what is in this chart here?
Yeah, but that's the increase over.
Yeah, yeah, because, because it says total monthly increase. All right. I want to go with whatever is less impacted employees.
We're talking seven-twenty versus?
Or six-fifty-four.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
We're talking eighty thousand, wow, yeah.
The, the other thing too, we gotta consider, I think Mr. Pardon mentioned it, is, you know, when you're, I, I, when I compare, my brother, my brother's in the private sector. I'm in the public sector and he, he makes double or triple what I do, but what he has to pay for insurance is the same compared to what I, I have to pay in the public sector. And, and having a family, it's, it's absurd to think what he has to pay in the medical bills. So I think that does give us an advantage as, as far as being in the public sector. That is something that Mr. Pardon said that is an advantage of, you know, we're talking about retaining employees. You know, this could be something, we, we can't always compete with the Fairfax's and the Arlington's on salaries. But I, I wouldn't move that we adopt option one.
Second. Motion and a second that we adopt option one as our insurance. Yeah. Um, any discussion?
Mr. Pardon, if we had to raise salaries to compensate for three or four to one, so it would be roughly two-hundred thousand dollars, roughly, I mean, the delta, the delta in those. I'm just looking at the difference in cost between three and one or four and one.
Are you saying if we gave a salary increase, how much salary increase would we have to give to cover this health insurance increase?
That would be impossible.
Which you, you have to include social security taxes and all the other things.
Right, but it's.
I'm just looking at strict, I'm looking at number. For that, just a straight number.
I think that would be hard to come up with because it depends on what the employee status is, like, for example, employee that's paying for single versus employee.
So we have three hundred employees, three hundred employees and insurance.
Then you gotta figure out which plan you take.
Yeah, but you could do.
You're single, so you have a different plan.
That's true, there's a lot of deltas.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but what's like a one percent raise in the county is what? Ninety thousand dollars? A hundred thousand dollars? Because she was muted.
Yeah, what did she say?
There's about a hundred, she said, he said.
About a hundred for one percent? And that, that's not gonna cover it?
No, no, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at the deltas and that's kind of what I was looking for. If you had to do one percent just to sort of cover everybody, what's that? So two percent is basically the two-hundred thousand difference that we've got.
We gotta hire a little bit of firefighter, so.
So that, so there.
I mean, believe me, I'm, that's one of the things driving this is, you know, we're gonna have to hire people.
We need to get those up.
So there's a motion and a second that we adopt option one for the county insurance. Um, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Pardon, well, Ms. Jones will use option one would be our. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is, next on the agenda is, we have item number three, the consent agenda. I think, Mrs. Long, you wanted to pull.
I'm sorry, I wanted to pull a place, if we could put that under new business, maybe, uh, eight, seven B?
Which one you pulling, Mrs. Stone?
E.
E. But Mrs. Long wants to pull item E from the consent agenda?
And she wants to move it to seven?
It would go under new business, correct?
Right.
Right.
So it'll be se- seven, eight?
E or seven A, whatever you want to do.
We'll make it seven A. All right. Is there any other amendments to the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've moved adoption of the consent agenda items A through D, F, G, and H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question.
There's a motion and a proper second that we move, that we approve agenda items A through D and F, G, and H, and move item E to seven A. Any discussion?
I have a question, did you want to add the discussion on doing something with the online, online tax, uh, filing thing?
Absolutely. Yes, um, I need to, I amended the agenda early and didn't give it a number. We're going to, um, appoint Mr. Thomas under item eight A to be the person to do the research regarding the online tax issue.
Can we just put that under consent, make it aye?
We can do aye. If you want to do that, okay. Now move it to the consent agenda under I, as a.
Do we all get an option in the consent agenda?
You do, you can vote no.
Yeah.
All right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amendment.
That was, that was my motion.
Yeah, that was my motion.
You want to amend?
I'll, I'll amend the, uh, my motion and include item I.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes as noted. As amended. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is, uh, ten minutes, well, five minutes till eight.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna handle E?
She wanted to make that a new item.
She made it a new item.
Okay, okay.
Seven A.
Right, seven A is what it is. All right. What's that?
Do we get at least ten?
Yeah, I'm on that. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we, we got started late, and we apologize, but we are human, and I, I need to take a ten minute break. If you would allow us to take a break till eight oh five, we'll come back and we will, um, start with the public hearing and move through the pub, I mean, the public comment and then the public hearing. So right now, we are in recess. Thank you. Please state your name, your voting, magisterial district, please.
Good evening, Corey Garrett from the Fort Royal District.
Can you, can anybody hear it? I can't hear it, I didn't hear. Can you?
Sorry. Good evening, Corey Garrett from the Fort Royal District, I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Appreciate y'all moving, um, three E on your agenda, um, to allow for public comment.
Or that, um, there we go. Um, I just have some concerns on that point, as far as I, I know, I, I guess I don't know what all is entailed in, in what you would be voting on in three E, but to this point, uh, as far as I know, y'all have not obtained a word forward, um, on that front, as far as serving any property as such. I don't see the need for that. Mr. Chair, earlier you mentioned being a good steward of funds, and that just seems to maybe be spending funds unnecessarily before you even know if you have the opportunity. There has been, um, some talk, I thi- I think y'all went to the King George Board of Supervisors, um, earlier this year, maybe if not late last year, and told them that y'all would have a permit for a withdrawal, um, soon, and that time that you guaranteed them has expired and moved on. So there's a lot going on. Um, I think there's a, a lot at risk, yes, that the county maybe needs water, and that seems to be a grave concern, but there's also other issues, um, protecting the river, protecting our side of the county, um, where we already have a twenty-five acre lot restriction, um, in place, and then to come and potentially try to put a commercial facility within that, um, area. I, I just think it needs a second thought. So that's what I have to say on that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Ms. Garrett, I'd only say that, you know, during public comments, really not question and answer, so I think if you maybe talk to Mrs. Long, I hope she can give you some insight. That's about as far as I goes in terms of comment. Stay within the rules. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Last time, is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comment? Seeing no one coming forth, public comment is now closed. Next on the agenda are our public hearings. First on the agenda is Tax Amendment 03-2021. Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your first public hearing is TXT 03-2021. This is actually a housekeeping amendment, which would repeal Article 15, Section 6 of the Caroline County zoning ordinance as it relates to the flood hazard regulations. Several years ago, during an update to the floodplain regs, we actually incorporated those provisions in to the county code under the environmental chapter, which is Chapter forty-five, which are in fact the current regulations and regulations we go by. These are the older regulations, they are duplicative of the regulations that we're actually using, so this is simply a cleanup matter to eliminate these regulations from the zoning ordinance, since the actual regulations are in the county code.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. I would believe that a motion would be in order to repeal this, Mr. Fincham. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Public hearing is now open for Tax Amendment 03-2021. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Again, this is Tax Amendment 03-2021. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing on this is closed. How does the board wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Tax Amendment 03-2021, the ordinance to amend the zoning of Caroline by repealing Article fifteen supplemental regulations, Section six flood hazard zones.
I'll say it. There's a motion, a proper second, that we adopt Tax Amendment 03-2021 regarding the repeal of Amendment fifteen supplemental regulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is adopted, Mr. Fincham, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is our public hearing for RZ 03-2019, the Virginia Bazaar. Owner-operator, I guess it's Plan, I don't know, Panatoni Development Company Incorporated, the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, your next public hearing, RZ 03-2019, Virginia Bazaar owner, Panatoni Development Corporation, the applicant. They're requesting a rezoning from B1 business with no specified density to M1 industrial no specified density with proffered conditions on tax map fifty-three A-64B, which contains approximately ninety-seven point two-five acres. The property is located at eighteen thousand one eighty-eight Bazaar Avenue, Ruthers Glen, in the Madison Drive Voting District. The proposed use specifically is an industrial warehouse and distribution facility containing approximately seven hundred to one thousand square feet of total floor area. The comprehensive plan designates this property as regional business in the Lady Smith Community Plan. I think the board is well aware of this application, it's actually been roughly in the works for about two years. The owner approached the board with a rezoning request a number of years ago, seeking flexibility in the potential development of the site for resale purposes. The planning commission at that time forwarded a recommendation to the board for denial of the application due to the vagueness of the application and a lack of a firm committed development proposal. The application actually sat with the board for a considerable amount of time after public hearing, because the board had similar concerns to the planning commission with the proposal. Over the course of the last six to eight months, there has been increased interest in the property. The board is aware that there was a roughly a one million square foot warehouse and distribution facility that was proposed for this site back during the summer. That application was ultimately withdrawn due to concerns about the size and intensity of the project. There was still continued interest, which has resulted in the application that is before you tonight, of the roughly seven hundred thousand square foot facility, which is split amongst between a little over five hundred thousand square feet for the primary warehouse and distribution area, as well as an additional storage facility or mezzanine of another hundred and seventy thousand square feet that would be less intensive storage, or perhaps longer term storage. The board asked that the planning commission take a look at this, which it did at its November meeting. The planning commission comments, general comments are included in your packet. Basically, it centered around four items. They felt the overall design of the project was attractive and offered significantly better architectural control than the original application. They felt that the proposed use limitations in the proffers were substantially better than the original rezoning application for the unlimited M1. They were concerned about traffic concerns, or traffic issues at the interchange, but they also noted that development has to occur at that interchange in order to, for VDOT to make improvements there. They also felt that, they had some concerns about the loss of commercial acreage, that that's something that they thought, as Mr. Black alluded to, that perhaps we should look at that in a comprehensive plan in terms of the overall location of commercial and industrial zoning, particularly in the Lady Smith area. I would note that you also have received an update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. We had requested comments from VDOT prior to the packet going out, unfortunately, we did not get those comments until after the packet had been submitted to the board. They have requested some additional information from the applicant, which they're requesting that that be provided to them prior to any additional review and comment. We have received updated proffers from the applicant. The, I think, significant change is the applicant is proposing some additional transportation improvement dollars in response to the issues raised by the Virginia Department of Transportation. With that, I'll address any questions that the board may have.
Can he, can he tell us about those transportation improvements? We can ask him questions first. We can ask him questions first. Ms. Fincham, you want to, just for the board's edification, explain what those increased transportation proffers are?
It basically is an increase in the proffer towards the transportation improvements at the interchange from a hundred and fifty thousand to, I believe it's four hundred thousand.
Mr. Fincham, I have one question, Mr. Chair. Am I correct in saying that the M1, the rezoning M1 is not consistent with the comprehensive plan that's currently in place?
I think certainly you can make that, that.
Well, that's what it says.
Yes, yes. Regional business has a, you're looking at commercial uses that generate higher amounts of traffic, for example, perhaps a Walmart, even though it looked on the east, west side of interchange, might be appropriate on the east side of interchange. Larger, larger facilities that generate significant traffic, Lowe's, Home Depot, even a regional shopping facility. That's a long-term vision for that area. It is currently zoned B1. B1 does allow warehouse and distribution facilities by special exception, so in theory, an application could be made for this project as a special exception under the B1 zone. I believe the applicant, since the M1 zoning regulation had already been, application already been filed about two years ago, opted to proceed forward that way in lieu of the SE under the B1.
Mr. Black?
I've just got a general question kind of, as the comprehensive plan. Why do you think it is in Caroline right now? Our major subdivisions are all off the one-ten exit, so Lakeland or Lake Caroline, and the growth has been in Pendleton off that exit. Why are we not seeing the growth? We have some subdivisions down at the exit one oh four, but we're not seeing the growth in those subdivisions like we are at the one-ten exit. What is the reason behind that?
Yeah. I think one component of that is the market. I think our market tends to be from the north. People looking to move south, but still travel north to work. I think it's also activity breeds more activity, so I think because of the number of projects that have been approved in Lady Smith area, that's actually building, the activity is actually building upon itself, and availability of lots by the developers. You actually have developers there who are committed to bringing lots online for their, for the builders who are interested in developing there, and the proffers that are in place, you know, to support that development.
Remember, Mr. Black, that we just, you know, we talked about Belmont that.
Yeah, we did, we did, but that was fine.
We turned that one.
But I mean, you know, my concern, and from the get-go, and I'm not going to hide it, is the fact that, you know, in talking to people, people, a lot of people don't want to move to the exit one oh four for one reason, that's truck traffic. I mean, let's be honest, I mean, you don't, where you have major subdivisions, I'm not a big fan, so, all right, thank you.
I live on exit one oh four, so don't be talking about exit one oh four. The other thing is all those, all those truck stops predate everybody on this board, so we all inherited those.
All right. Not a question on our bill.
Nothing, any other questions for Mr. Fincham before I open up the, open here? Mrs. Long?
Mr. Fincham, what would have been the pros and cons between if we had, if this request had come to us as a special exception permit in the B1? How would that have affected our choices and changes instead of a rezoning?
The underlying B1 would still be in place, so you'd be looking at theoretically a different set of potential uses should the application shut down or cease to exist in the future. I think the applicant has tried to address that concerns by eliminating, one, the more obnoxious M1 uses, and two, moving certain other uses from by right uses to the special exception category. There's still a potential for, for those uses by special exception, and there's still some that the board probably would, would not approve at that location in the future, such as a tow storage lot. I think with the visibility to ninety-five, it's certainly not an entry feature to Lady Smith that the board would be supportive of. So, I think that the real difference would be the intensity and the type of uses that are allowed in B1 versus even a conditional M1.
And then my other question is, I'm really concerned that we didn't get this from VDOT until today, so I haven't really had a chance to digest this.
I understand.
Mr., anybody have, Mr. Fuente, any question before we open up a public hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, RZ 03-19, the Virginia Bazaar, is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak to this matter? Mr. Payne? He's coming, yeah, Mr. Payne, the applicant, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors. My name is Charlie Payne, I represent the applicant. I appreciate your time this evening. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you. It's always good to be in Caroline County. I know you've seen this property before. This is the second application this year that I've been before you on this project, or on this property. The first project, as you may recall, was a similar project, coastal storage and distribution. That project included, which was Flint, Flint obviously got approved at exit one oh four, and true to their word, they're moving forward to develop a one point one million square foot facility, which I think would be awesome for Caroline County, is going to be a positive tax generator, as will this project. That project at Lady Smith was one point one million square feet too, and it didn't have a user. We have a great advantage here, that we do have a user, and it's a smaller building. Because we have a user, we actually can define what the traffic counts are going to be, so we can better understand what the impacts are. So, that's been part of our process and our valuation. To the question about land use, the future land use, this property, Virginia Bazaar, has been zoned B1 for a long time, I think since two thousand and six. It's been for sale for over ten years. It's had no viable buyer, whether commercial, retail, or other, and this is the highest and best use for the site. And what we tried to do was to tailor it in a consistent way with the current underlying zoning, but didn't ask for a special exception, because there are all the reasons Mr. Fincham said, but if we did, you wouldn't get proffers. So, the great part about the rezoning opportunity is you can get cash proffers to help you, and to mitigate, and to invest in infrastructure, and architectural renderings, and the GDP, which limits the size of the building, which limits it to one building. So, all of those are great advantages to going through the rezoning process, because you can limit the uses, you limit the footprint, and you can get some cash proffers and mitigate infrastructure. So, I just wanted to start out with that as part of our presentation. So, I do have a PowerPoint, and I'm going to go through it pretty quickly. Okay. Am I pointing in the right direction? All right. Sure. Thank you. Ms. Long, just by the way, we didn't get the letter from VDOT till yesterday as well, so we were hustling the scramble. We were hustling the scramble. Perfect, thank you. So, again, this is Project Copper. We do have a user, as I noted earlier, we cannot disclose that user. The developer is Panatoni, which is an absolute tier-one national developer for industrial and commercial properties, and I'll get into a little bit of background on them. Here it is, so with thirty-five years of experience in commercial real estate development, they are in Virginia, they're nationwide, they specialize in industrial office and build-to-seed projects, they have successfully developed over five hundred and twenty-five million square feet of industrial. They have successfully developed over 525 million square feet of industrial office and retail space in 310 cities in the U.S. The application overview, the property does consist of about 97 plus acres. You're well aware of its location off Lake Smith Road, east of I-95. The request is rezoning, as I noted earlier, from B1 to M1 for all the reasons I had stated. The project will include 517,220 square feet foot facility. Within that facility will be an 18,470 square foot office space. I think it's important to note that this user has a, an employment scope from high management to mid-management to blue collar to truck driver, to truck, tractor trailer drivers, et cetera. And then all the services and all the companies that serve them in the area. So this is a very positive opportunity. Within the space is an option, but we did include it as part of our traffic analysis is 184,350 foot mezzanine area, which is basically a platform for additional storage. We may or may not use it, but we did include it as an option. So the overall square footage is about 78,000, which is again, is part of our traffic study. And the reason we're able to take advantage of the numbers that we have in our study, which was approved by VDOT, is we have similar facilities in the, on the east coast and throughout the country. So we were able to use that operational data for that purpose. The development will be designed to accommodate office, warehouse, storage, distribution, light assembly, packaging, manufacturing, and general light industry inflex uses, all of which are very consistent with this user as they evolve as a global tier one global company. We actually have proffered out 32 uses, not 28. This is sort of an older PowerPoint. And existing structures will be removed. I think the other really good thing about this project is how we buffer it, and you'll see in our GDP from I-95, and putting the truck parking in the rear of the site, employee parking towards the front. The project does conform to the comprehensive plan in our opinion, as it does establish an employment center and investment environment. And here's the Lady Smith community plan of business expansion and creation of employment opportunities. You'll see in our economic development numbers that this user will generate potentially a significant number of above-market wage employment. The property, the project also supports a 730 tax revenue, generation revenue compared residential to non-residential. Of course, every jurisdiction is challenged with paying for county services. The increased costs are the same. The type, this type of project would have very little impact on county services and generate positive tax revenue. And here are all the proffered out uses. You'll see there's 32 of them. This number is right, prior number is wrong. As, as Mr. Fincham noted, the, the concept was tailor this site, this project to the underlying zoning as close as we could get it and get rid of most of the obnoxious uses. And again, this is a, this is, this, this facility is going to be state-of-the-art and planned to be here for over 50 years. So the more flexibility we can give it within the confines of your comfort level, the better it will be and more viable it would be. So here's the GDP, as I was discussing earlier, I-95 is to the left, Bazaar Avenue is to the north, to the east is where the parking will be for employees, I'm sorry, trucks. To the, to the west will be parking for employees. You see the access roads to each of those. And again, extensive buffering between I-95 and the building. I know there was concerns about visibility from I-95. So this won't be a truck stop. This won't be a truck service stop. This is going to be a very state-of-the-art, high-end facility. Here are the elevations that we have proffered. Very typical for this user. Again, all sides of the building have been proffered. Economic development, which I know is very important to the county. The projections are that this site will generate 150 to 250 construction jobs during the construction phase. We anticipate that'll take about 24 months. Full-time employment could range from 200 to 600 people in total between two or three shifts. Again, that would range from high management all the way to drivers. And just so you know, this facility will not be small van delivery, truck delivery. This is going to be semi-trailer to and from distribution. The building shell, we believe, will estimate it typically estimates between 36 and 41 million. That's just a shell itself. That would generate close to $320,000 annually in just real estate tax. Over a 30-year period, you're looking at nine to 10 million dollars just in the real estate tax. We cannot disclose what the, what the personal property tax may be, your machinery tool tax. However, it will be state-of-the-art, very automated robotic features, again, high-end investment. With that, you're probably looking at over $500,000 easy in annual tax revenue as a minimum. Access to the site, as you're all familiar with, will be provided only on Bazaar Avenue. It's 1,300 feet to the interchange from there. So this, this facility, this project is not going to be on secondary roads very long on Lady Smith Road very long. It's not going to be traveling Route 1. It's not going to be traveling east. It's going to be hitting the interchange going north and south. And that traffic, as you'll see in our analysis, we spread out over a 24-hour period. You're going to see our peak hour traffic analysis, and I'll show you that in a bit. But just to give you a little highlight, the peak hour traffic in the AM for tractor-trailers is going to be seven. And in the PM, 12. Why is that? Distribution centers don't operate efficiently during rush hour. They spread their traffic out over a 24-hour period as they do the employment workforce during shifts. Access again is right off 110. This is, this is an old PowerPoint, cash contribution of $150,000 towards that interchange area. That's been changed to $400,000. And just to give you some analysis on the by right trips versus what we're generating for this project. Again, these numbers are as close to real as you can get, given similar operating facilities. Daily traffic is going to be about 2,624 trips, 166 during the peak hour and 119 during the PM hour. Most of those trips are going to be jobs. They're going to be folks coming to and from work during AM and PM peak hours. Again, all that 166, seven are tractor-trailers and a PM 12 are going to be tractor-trailers. Again, very low impact during rush hour. If you compare that to a 600,000-plus commercial build-out facility on that acreage, which you could do, you're looking at about 23,488 trips. The difference is about 20,864 trips by right, no control, no proffers. And again, that's a significant impact to that interchange. You're looking at 532 trips during the AM and 2,232 during the PM. Again, the delta is significant versus what we're proposing versus what you can do by right. 366 in the morning, 2,113 in the PM. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Now, we do have our civil engineer here, our traffic engineer here. We have the representative of the applicant and the owner is here, so the property. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter before we? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? All right, board members? Question? Yeah. We'll close the public hearing. So public hearing for RZ 092019 is now closed. Board members, questions for the applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Black?
I, I have one, I don't know if it's for Mr. Payne or I don't know if you were the attorney several years ago. We had in front of us the Airlie. I don't know if you were their attorney or not.
I was, yes.
And if you remember, I, I thought they did their homework very well in the sense that they went on a campaign around the county and they had different public forums to explain that, hey, if this comes in, there's, there's going to be some changes. And they, I think they held forums outside the Lake Caroline community and Lady Smith. And this, this has not happened here. Do you know why that is?
Well, I guess a couple of things, you know. One, the pandemic obviously has impacts on meeting with folks, but there, this is not apples to apples to Airlie, right? Airlie is literally right across from Lake Caroline, is near, it was near dense residential development. This project is not. This is probably, gosh, I don't know, third, fourth, fifth public hearing on this matter. And I don't recall one person opposing the project. Could be wrong about that, it could be contact on you, but publicly I haven't seen anyone oppose the project. So it, it just, it just, the site has been used for a commercial purpose for a very long time, has been for sale for a very long time. Again, it just is outside the footprint of heavily dense population areas.
The, I, on your project copper thing here that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
Your, you compared it at the end. Where did you get this? Where did you get this data from? Because you compared it at the end to the vehicle traffic.
Yes, sir. That, that's VDOT's ITE numbers, so we're pulling it right from their ITE models for commercial uses.
So, for example, the general, with the general retailer, you're saying that there's 23,000, I saw something, if it, like, I, I guess this was if we had approved the Walmart or I saw something earlier in this, had Walmart been approved or in Caroline. So you're saying that if it was a general retailer, that we would have 23,400 cars a day? Is that what?
That's what the ITE model would, would, would generate. So that's 97 acres, what's the maximum amount of square footage you can get on it? You'll see in there, it's about 600,000 and some change. And that will, at full build-out, that will generate over 23,000 trips. What we're saying is with our project, 513,000 square feet, we're generating 2,600-plus trips per day on the same site.
Okay, because I got some numbers from, just some, from some traffic from VDOT myself. And like, for example, on, on Route 3, they have a total of, the total traffic on Route 3 per day off the exit is 95,000 cars. So you're saying in this, so that's going to like, towards Central Park and all those businesses. So if we had built a Walmart, a commercial center, we would have, 23 would have one quarter of that number of traffic if we built a Walmart?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the data that VDOT gave you, what we're looking at. And, and Michael Young, our traffic engineer, ran the, ran the ITE numbers. So IT, so VDOT has
I mean, if those numbers are real, I want Walmart to see these numbers again because I want them coming back. I, I, I guess it's very, it's very, very, I don't understand how a, a company would, would turn that down if that was going to be the number of trips. But okay, I'll get back to some other questions. Thank you.
It goes to impact.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Yeah, my concern for this, more than anything, is the, is the south, the southbound trucks making the left-hand turn. I can't afford to clog that whole intersection up all the way down 95 during even non-peak hours. I mean, if you want to call seven to eight and, and four to five peak, if you ride through 639, I went through there Saturday. 95 was backed up, I mean, the off-ramp was backed up halfway, waiting for people to make either a left or right-hand turn. We're getting ready to, 639 is a major commercial sector for us. We're, we're spending $27 million to actually develop that and are counting on that for a, a whole lot of commercial development that we've spent a lot of time and energy on to develop that. To now put a, a, another truck facility, I mean, I get the complaints all the time about 104, it's nothing but trucks, nothing but trucks, nothing but trucks. And now we're going to take, and anybody going south, heading south, that gets off at 95, gets off at 639 to make that left turn, that's going to be a tough left turn. And it's going to be 100 trucks an hour. I'd like to, because what I see in here from your traffic engineer, I, I guess in the preface of this, I mean, these numbers made zero sense. 508 trips, 524 trips in, 554 trips out. There's an hourly traffic amount. There's a number of trucks going there a day. There're going to be 40 or 50 trucks an hour, either probably entering and 40 or 50 trucks an hour leaving there. It has to be to make those numbers. So I don't know why there wasn't per trip, per hour, per day with your seven, 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM and the 12 at four to five. Because if you just separate out those, that's 12 truck trips out of roughly 2,624. If you subtract, so we'll call it 2,000 truck trips, I'll give you 600 for car traffic. That's a lot of tra, a lot of truck traffic, all making a left, a left turn coming southbound on 95. I can't, I can't inhibit everybody that lives in the lake communities and Pendleton, in, in Lady Smith Village because we've decided that it's good to have a warehouse there. And we're looking at, at minimum, talking to VDOT, eight years to fix that. And probably $30 million. I'd like to hear how we're going to fix that. Maybe your traffic engineer can tell me where the dollars for that come from, because it's 30 million to, to four-lane that bridge.
Right, so I, I appreciate your comments. And again, and we're talking of 2,600 trips, 2,100 of those trips are new jobs, people going to and from, go to work. 500 plus of those trips are truck traffic. This user, most distribution users, don't travel during peak hour when folks are on the road. They spread their traffic out. It, it, it's operational efficiency. I, I, you know, obviously can't disclose a user and they're obviously very successful in what they do. As to the left turn movements going from southbound exit, we're very comfortable that they can make those turns. And I believe, I recall Kyle Page, who is here from VDOT, agreed with that on the last project, that he was comfortable they can make that left turn. But to your question on investment, infrastructure investment, obviously 639s are going to be improved from Route 1, but not to the bridge, we understand that. It's this type of user and this type of investment that stimulates new opportunities for infrastructure. I think you're seeing that my clients coming to the table and saying, we're, we're going to be a good neighbor and play a significant role in that investment. It helps us, it helps you, and we want to know, you know, we want to play that role ongoing. It also attracts other investment, this type of user does. So I think, and plus, just look at the tax revenue that'd be generated from that site. This, again, this is a unique, unique opportunity to have new revenue to improve infrastructure in that area. And, and it's on the east side, it's away from dense development, it's 1,300 feet from the interstate. This, this is intended not to have an adverse impact on your community, it's intended to have a positive impact.
But we spent $6 million county funds for the other side, for all of 639 from Route 1 to 95, 6 million county dollars. And it's $21 million state. This bridge is going to be, by all estimates, around $30 million to actually four-lane it to come across and then probably some distance up 639. I haven't even opened up the first business on the Route 1 to 95 section. Haven't opened up the first business. And then we're going to, we're going to, we're going to put something else that's going to be hugely intensive. And we've got a tremendous amount of growth in the Route 1 corridor, tremendous amount. We've had more building permits this year than we had during the big boom in 2006 and '07. We have, we've outstripped that. My primary concern of the folks that are there and the new folks that are over there because we've got, we've got new, new spaces being opened up for development. And we kill it if we're not careful with the amount of traffic that makes that left turn and backs traffic up down, down the 95 off-ramp to 95. It, it could potentially look like we do a masaponics. And you know what masaponics looks like at six o'clock at night? I mean, I've sat in it many times coming back from up north. It's on the 95.
I appreciate that. I don't think this project's going to do that. I think you're more vulnerable for that to occur with your by right use. Your by right use will have an adverse impact. If it kicks into play, it has an adverse impact on that interchange with no proffers, no investment. This is a low-impact use, in my opinion, compared to what could happen there. And it is an extraordinarily positive investment and investor in this county. I, I find that, I just find it to be a unique opportunity that I wish we would look at a little bit differently in regards to what the impact is. What, what's the positive return on this? I think it outweighs your impact. That's, that's my opinion.
Let me ask, Nancy, you have any comment?
Yes, I did have one question. The letter that we just got?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you all able to address all these concerns?
Yes.
Are you willing to cover those?
We're, we're going to address them and obviously responded to the cash question, which we, you know, not unusual for VDOT to ask for money or contributions, so we were addressing that. Now, remember, that, at the interchange on north and southbound, we are contributing 8% and 12% new traffic for the whole day, just 8% and 12%. So if you ran our program out of share on what it would cost to fix both ramps, it's about $80,000, right? That's what our traffic analysis shows. So we proffered double that, thinking, okay, this is, so VDOT come back, so who's going to pay the, who's going to pay the rest of? So we're saying, okay, we're halfway in. We, we would love to see that investment on the northbound ramp, if that's where the county desired to do it first, because that would, obviously, that's the more sensitive impact area and it's closer to our facility. Because that would, obviously, that's the more sensitive impact area and it's closer to our facility. But again, I think we are, you know, not only bringing an economic development opportunity that's going to create positive jobs and positive tax, I mean, extensive positive tax revenue, but we're also contributing additional cash profits, which is unique for an industrial user, quite honestly. You may recall, Flint only profited $100,000.
Mr. Thomas, you want the last say on this?
I had a couple of comments, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Payne, I guess it's no secret that you know who the applicant is.
I do.
It's no secret that every member on this board knows who the applicant is. However, we are all tied to a nondisclosure agreement and we cannot disclose who the applicant is.
Correct.
We all know it's a good company.
Correct.
So, having said that, comparing this to the Airlea project is, as you said, not really apples to apples because the Airlea project was basically a blank forest.
And it's 1.5 million square feet.
And if I were to ask Mr. Wilson to come up, he would say that the Airlea project is probably under contract now for somebody else and we could have a really good project going there soon. So they are a little bit different. The 639 project that the county's doing is to the west side. It's no secret that I didn't like that project once we lost Walmart. But the fact that we're getting a gas station there is kind of nice and another fast food restaurant. But nobody counts the fact that you can only buy so much gas. So the more gas stations I put there, the other gas stations that exist are going to lose money. As is the other fast food restaurant that's going to lose money. So those new businesses are not going to be as economically advantageous as we would expect. This project is neither a gas station nor a fast food restaurant and is purely economically advantageous.
Correct.
It also provides, how many jobs?
Anywhere from 200, anywhere from 200 to 600 jobs, depending on what we do, obviously, with either the platform or just.
Okay, it also provides what a lot of people say we need in the county is more, more jobs. We all know, the board members here know that booming residential, which is what we see on the western side of the county, is a great thing. A lot of new people moving into the county. But as we all know, it's costing about $10,000 to educate one student. So every house we get with two or three students is costing the county money. This one, I don't have to buy any new sheriff deputies, I don't have to buy any new teachers. For the most part, it's.
It's going to supplement your needs for your county services.
Okay, the other thing is sprawl. For those that are concerned about sprawl moving on the west, on the eastern side of 639, we pretty much have some built-in barriers like Madison School and a lot of residential. So you can only go to Bull Church Run, which is a by right place across the street. So you setting a precedent of offering us $400,000 would probably make that person offer $400,000 or so. We'd have more money to work on this project.
Correct.
Okay, I know there are some downsides to the traffic with the bridge. The board itself, I mean, we, we haven't had any discussion, but we might want to have a discussion. If a project like this is approved, we might want to put a percentage of the funds into a transportation fund to eventually build up something like that. I mean, that's something that would be smart for us to do, at least for the next two years, because we can't necessarily tie it up to the next board. But that's a project we could do. So, I mean, I just wanted to get those comments and make sure I understood all the things that we had there out in the open. And if we're, you know, if there's no other questions, then we're ready for, oh, okay.
My comment is, and Mr. Payne, thanks for being here. I think you're correct in that Virginia Bazaar and that property has been, not been able to do anything with that for a number of years. And I think the question that we're all struggling with, as we're going to continue to struggle, is do we build infrastructure first? Or do we have the businesses to support building infrastructure? I like the, I like the numbers that I, that I see. I agree with, that there are some, some negative in terms of traffic there. But I really feel that the pros outweigh the, outweigh the cons. I think that we have an obligation to the tax base, to our taxpayers. Our taxpayers are carrying a pretty good load with new assessments of over 20% on average for the average household. And as I said, inflation at 6%. You know, people can't, I don't think they can afford to continue. We have to grow. The fire and rescue indicate they need 19 people. We're going to have to generate revenue. I live off Exit 104 and I can remember when there wasn't much there. I can remember when the State Fair wasn't there and I could come down Route 30 and make the left turn on Signboard Road. I'm not opposed to growth and some inconvenience. And I think sometimes the good of one sometimes has to kind of take a backseat to the good for the majority of the county. And I looked at this and I thought about it. Jeff and I had an hour-long discussion, I think yesterday or the day before. And we were shooting back and forth, pros and cons, and I think that's a good thing for this board. But I like the numbers, I like the project and I wish it could be different, but we're going to deal with the hammer down. So those are my comments, board members. Now, if you want any other comments or you want to call for it, both, Mr.?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Mr. Black?
Mr. Payne, I understand that you, I understand what your job is. I get it. Your job is to represent your clients. And I think you know that on the Airlea project, I was with you. On the Flint project, one of the Flint projects down at Exit 104, I was with you. I personally don't think this is a bad project. I do not think the location is good at all. I have my job to do to represent my constituents. And Mr. Forehand got off the exit this summer, I got off the exit this summer. That exit right now is currently clogged at the summer all the time, non-peak, non-peak. So we're talking summer traffic, not, not, we're talking Saturday, which I consume is non-peak. Sunday, that exit is jammed up right now as it is continuously. How we're going to handle 500 tractor-trailers coming off that exit on a Saturday or Sunday in the middle of the summer? Forget that, there's just no way. If this project, you could go across the street because that's Zoned M1, right across the street is Zoned M1, and we couldn't stop it. If you put this project down on Carmel Church, you have my vote yesterday, tomorrow.
Thank you, Jeff.
But, but the fact of the matter is, is I don't think this is where we have, we don't have the infrastructure in place for it and we have major subdivisions that are feeding that exit. And so that reason, I cannot support this.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Chairman of the, Mr. Long?
I just wanted to state that, I remember when we were looking at Flint, that Mr. Forehand put up a post on Facebook and I read the comments. And one of the comments that hit me was, "I'm tired of driving north, I want to work at home." And that offered jobs. So I think that's also another thing we have to consider is, yes, will road improvements be necessary? Yes, is the applicant willing to help with that? Yes, are there other businesses that, as Mr. Thomas said, we could, could start thinking of ways to gather funds and applying for grants through the state, development grants, that type of thing for road improvements. But talking about citizens, although I am concerned about safety and I am concerned about delays, I think we need to remember that the offer of 200 to 600 jobs that our citizens can apply for where they don't have to pay whatever gas is going to end up costing in the future to drive up to Northern Virginia or even to Fredericksburg and to be closer to home and closer to their families is also a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thomas?
If we've all, we've all set our piece up, I think finally we, we have worked with this particular landowner for, I really don't want to say how long because I think I've known him for probably 20 years, if not that. He's been here for a while, he's been a good county citizen. He didn't actually run the bazaar. The bazaar was somebody else and selling knickknacks just wouldn't work anymore for that vendor. He's been trying to sell it for quite a while.
That's correct, 10 years.
We have, we have told him over and over again, we'll let you sell your property, but we want to know who the, who the end user is. We told him we didn't like that particular end user, can you come back again? This is probably the third time that we've said, "Come back again and let us know if this is the right end user." But he, as the owner, has proffered out quite a few things the county would find, I don't know if I'd use the word obnoxious like Mr. Payne said, but unsuitable particular options. We've, we've got a project that we know who the, who the end user is, we know who the developer is. I have heard of Panatoni for years because Mr. Wilson has been trying to get Panatoni to come to several other sites for years. So we've got finally a win-win and it's not as big as the Flint site, so we've made some concessions there. I think now is the time that the county can say, "We are truly pro-business. We're, we've got a good project, we want the rest of the world to know we've got a good project and we're going to move ahead." So on that note, I'll make a motion to approve this particular rezoning.
There's a motion that we approve RZ03 2019, Virginia Bazaars are second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Forehand, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the proffers.
As amended.
As amended.
So we need to amend the motion?
I did that, he just amended.
You amended your second, well, Mr. Forehand?
I amend my second to include the proffers as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, there's a division in the House, I will do a roll call. Mr. Forehand, your vote? Mr. Forehand votes aye. Mr. Black, how do you vote?
Mr. Black goes nay.
Mr. Black votes nay. Mr. Sealy, how about nay? Mr. Sealy votes nay. Mrs. Long, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Long votes aye. Mr. Thomas, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote, I as well, motion carries 42. It's approved. Thank you. Agenda item number six, special exception 06-21, Garrison Melvin and Katrina Owner, Whalebone Solar LLC. Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your last public hearing tonight is SPDX 06-2021. Melvin and Katrina Garrison, owner, Whalebone Solar LLC applicant, are requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article 17, Section 13, and Article 4, Section 5.40 of the Carolina County zoning ordinance on tax map numbers 8-A-72, 72A1, and 72B, containing approximately 30 acres more or less. Such properties located on Route 2, approximately 3.5 miles south of the Carolina County, Spotsylvania County line in the Port Royal Voting District. The 2030 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as rural preservation. The proposed use is a minor solar energy project of approximately 3 megawatts. The applicant was requesting special exception approval to utilize approximately 12 and a half acres of a 30-acre site for a proposed minor solar energy project of up to 3 megawatts. The project is under the 5-megawatt threshold and technically is exempt from machinery and tools tax. However, the applicant and staff and county attorney have developed a condition that would allow the applicant to commit to revenue sharing based upon the standards that are contained in the suggested conditions. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as rural preservation and the property is a RP consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The RP zoning district does allow minor solar energy projects via special exception permit granted by the Board of Supervisors. The public hearing, Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request at its August 26 meeting. There was one speaker who did speak in opposition to the application. The Planning Commission ultimately referred this request to the board with no recommendation as a result of a tie vote at its October 14 meeting. Staff has included the minutes of the meeting in your packet for your reference in terms of the discussion by the Planning Commission. The application is subject to numerous standards, general standards for special exception permits, standards for minor solar energy projects, and the additional submission requirements that are set forth in the zoning ordinance for the minor solar energy projects. Staff has developed a set of suggested conditions for your consideration. They number 23 conditions in total. And with that, I'll address any questions at the board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Board members, questions for Mr. Fincham before we open up for a public hearing? Anyone? All right, seeing no one. The public hearing for special exception 06-2021 is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding the applicants? You want to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Seth Mon with Soy Nescu. I'll be presenting our Whalebone Solar project. A few of you may remember me from 2016 when I first approached the county with interest in developing a solar project here in the county. It's a pleasure to be finally presenting a project in front of you all. Soy Nescu is a Virginia-based solar developer. We focus exclusively on utility-scale solar here in the Commonwealth only. Just a brief project overview, some of this is redundant from what you just heard. Try to move through this quickly, please. It's a small project, I'll reiterate, 12 and a half acres is our estimated fenced-in acreage. We plan to employ single-axis tracking technology, which I believe is something you all are familiar with with your recent work on the new ordinance. If you want more details, I'm happy to elaborate. A couple of things of note, this project has a near connection agreement signed with the utility. That's unusual for the zoning phase, but we're not going through the lengthy, in order to SPJM process on this smaller distributional project. And we've been working with Rep. Ankletr Coop for quite some time on this project and we just, a month or two ago, inked a connection agreement, so there's no uncertainty there. We have an agreement with the utility. Additionally, we are marketing our electricity exclusively to the utility. We're late-stage discussions, trading red lines. We expect to have a PPA agreement with the utility in the coming months. So unlike a lot of projects that you're seeing in the county, this one, we can say will be sold to the utility for use by local repairers to the benefit because it is co-op. One thing I want to point out about the equipment used here is unlike larger projects, we don't require a dedicated and new substation. We can use a couple of sort of standard utility poles like you see here to house our connection equipment. So wanted to point that out, it's a little less invasive in that regard. I've quickly walked through some of the details of our general development plan, uh, which you guys, I believe, have. You know, page one shows our proposed development envelope. That's sort of the greatest extent to which we might place solar equipments. Uh, that envelope's eighteen acres. It, it sort of solidifies our commitments to setbacks and avoidance of environmental features such as wetlands. And then page two shows a, a preliminary layout within that, uh, development envelope. This layout is twelve and a half acres. We believe it's pretty accurate to what the final will look like to be submitted for approval, the final site plan. Uh, this also shows more detail on our buffer commitments. They are generally in line with, with the requirements set forth in the county and, but in the new ordinance. Uh, I will point out that we have committed to not disturbing, uh, or not developing east of the power line that runs to the site. That's why you see a very robust setback, uh, where it's adjacent to Highway two. Uh, and in that area, there is currently, uh, mature vegetation that will remain in place and serve as a very good buffer for life for this project. Uh, just a overview of, of the environmental due diligence we're going to be required to do and have already done on this project. I think you guys are aware of DQ's process for, for these projects. Just want to, uh, clarify that, that that is the next step in the process and we must go through DQ's PBR process to ensure that we've, we've checked the boxes and received the correct permits from an environmental standpoint that will come after the zoning. And, uh, we have Sean with Killian Horn, who's, who's our environmental engineers in this project. If there are any questions about this process, we'd be glad to elaborate. Decommissioning comes up a lot, so I just wanted to quickly devote a slide to this. Your guys' new ordinance does an excellent job of, of prescribing, uh, in great detail the decommissioning process that you wish to see here in the county. We are on board with that with no exceptions. Um, in a nutshell, you know, we'll be submitting a, a decommissioning plan to, to the county for approval prior to any construction. Uh, part of the plan will be a cost estimate for carrying out that plan. And if approved, uh, we, we will be providing a surety, financial surety to the county such that if we were, for some reason unable to decommission the project ourselves, the county would have the means to do it at, at the cost to the county. Another thing that's important here is, is that cost estimate gets updated every five years. So if things change with economics, of course, the surety will be in place in accordance. Uh, and finally, uh, something the county clarifies is, is what constitutes a necessity for decommission. In other words, we can't, you know, have a project that's no longer producing and we say, yeah, yeah, we'll get around decommissioning, you know, when our, when our permit expires. If our project is no longer producing, the, the county has the lever to, to force us to decommission. Or if we don't, use our surety to decommission themselves. So there's really no opportunity for, for, you know, panels to be laying around as, as people are often fearful of. Uh, that's very much buttoned up in the, in the zoning ordinance that you guys just, just pass and you're, you're fully scrapped to, to carrying that out. Uh, briefly, I want to touch on, uh, wire runoff requirements. Uh, I know that's a very important thing for this county. There are processes and permits that must be achieved for both ENS during construction and then stormor management. Uh, and I'll add that the county has, has added things into this ordinance that gives us greater, uh, assurances and also, uh, to, to our conditions that, that allow it to, to step if it feels like DQ, for example, hasn't put in strong enough requirements. So, uh, the county's done a very good job protecting itself there, in my opinion. Uh, and, and we look forward to working with the county and with DQ to, to ensure that, that this project isn't posing any risks with that regard. I want to briefly touch on, because I know it's hard to envision the site just looking at a black and white site plan, sort of the existing conditions and, you know, the potential for impact on adjacent neighbors. One of the first things we did in this project was, was we mailed letters to all adjacent landowners, uh, you know, introduced ourselves, gave my personal contact info, uh, and, and held a, a community meeting for anyone that had any questions. Uh, there are essentially, you know, four adjacent neighbors that really share footage with this project. Uh, they're kind of outlined here. Uh, and just to clarify the project itself, the project's parcels themselves are those that are outlined in dark. Uh, the others are neighbors. Uh, but just going around the horn here, uh, neighbor number A is, is McWert. She supports the project. She submitted a letter in support of the project. Neighbor B is AP Hill. There was some questions when, when we first started this project. They requested that we go through the military's, uh, sighting clearinghouse process. We have completed that process. Culminated in a, a letter from AP Hill citing that there's no impact to the activities, so the process was success. Neighbor C, uh, has not publicly stated an opinion on this project. We did have a friendly chat with them at the community meeting. Uh, I don't believe he opposes the project. He mentioned that he thought it would be a quiet neighbor. Uh, and then neighbor D is the same landowner as the project parcels. That's why they're kind of highlighted there. You know, a lot of the frontage on this is, is Garrison, who's, I believe, here tonight. He may stand up and, and say something during public comment, but I don't think he's going to oppose the project. Uh, I will note that, you know, despite the landowner in kind here, we are required and committed to putting a buffer between, uh, our parcels and his, meaning on that, that rear line, dark blue there. There will be a, a buffer in place, just as there is with the other neighbors. I wanted to briefly show you existing site conditions. Here is, uh, a, a picture that was taken just last week from Highway two. I like this picture because it's taken sort of the worst-case scenario as far as foliage uh, and shows that, uh, even this time of year, that the depth and thickness of the existing vegetation there is enough to totally screen that project highway two. We don't believe there's any chance that anyone traveling down Highway two, which is really the fifth neighbor, uh, would have an opportunity to see this project. Likewise, just wanted to quickly show you a picture from the interior of the project. This is what the, the site looks like today. The current landowner cleared it some years ago, uh, in anticipation of an alternative land use. This is kind of taken from the center of the site, looking back towards the other parcels that will maintain, that the current landowner will maintain use of while this project is in place. Uh, that's sort of the area where we will see that buffer put between, between those two clear, uh, parcels. And then beyond that, the parcels are sort of densely vegetated, as they were in the front of the project. As far as impact on the, the broader community, um, you know, this parcel will, will, or this, excuse me, this project will be a relatively quiet project that puts out decent tax revenue, assuming the acceptance of condition twenty-three, which allows us to contribute despite the, the usual exemption that projects as small enjoy. You know, again, decent tax numbers given a relatively small footprint of twelve or so acres. In addition, want to reiterate, uh, the potential for, for, you know, locally produced and used energy and to the benefit of the local ratepayer. You know, ODEC being a, or excuse me, REC being a cooperative is legally bound to make decisions in the interest of, of the ratepayers. And with this, with, with this and the other projects in this, in this proposal to them, uh, we're able to offer them price stability for a number of years. This is the nature of this development type. And that's why it's attractive to them. They believe it's attractive to them and the ratepayers. And, and that's why we're, we're excited about the opportunity to, to do business with them. And vice versa. In the final points I'd make, again, small, no, little chance of anyone seeing it. Uh, and then little tone impact on county resources. Other development types that would possible on this property and, and producing, you know, tax numbers like that would, would come with, with strain on county resources, as you all know. This really requires nothing. I'll note that, you know, the conditions as written today, we're, we're generally quite happy with. We, we, you know, applaud the county and their willingness to, you know, receive feedback and, and work to make sure that the county's interests were protected first and foremost, but were done so in, in a way that allowed this project not, not be jeopardized. Uh, there are a couple of loose ends that I would sincerely appreciate this board considering, uh, if, if they're inclined to, to support this project. Uh, I've, I've handed out some proposed red lines uh, that we think would, would still give the assurances that, that the county's looking for without causing problems for this project. The first is on condition three. Uh, it's, it says that the SEP is limited to forty years with options to renew. You know, our land deals for fifty, we believe the panels may last as long as fifty. Uh, from a financing perspective, we're, we're concerned that the financier may, may be concerned about the opportunity for stranded assets if these panels are still producing. And we have discretionary vote as to whether or not our, our SEP is extended. You know, we could be forced to remove panels that are still producing. This project's sister, sister project, a part of the ODEC deal in Louisa County, uh, was granted a similar set of conditions, but with fifty years. And we would ask if you would consider uh, just giving us a fifty-year SEP instead of forty, which gives us a lower harbor. Uh, additionally, condition A, uh, requests that we, we use entrance two during operations. That was our initial idea, was to not create that entrance one that you're seeing on the site plan. We received feedback from BDOTs and, and consequently had, uh, discussions with our engineers. And, and we feel that where the current entrance is, it's currently being used racks as empty lots and two, you know, recs, substation there. Uh, we don't think there's the site distances. We think it's a triangle. We don't think we have enough property, frankly, to use that in a safe way that BDOT will prove. We may be able to, and we're fine prioritizing the entrance if we are able to use it for that use. But our concern is that this condition would leave us without an entrance if BDOT won't prove that. So again, we're fine prioritizing the entrance if we can use it, but would, would appreciate some language that would allow us to continue using the other entrance in the event that BDOT just won't clear that for use. And then finally, this one has come up at the last minute. There's, uh, I would call it uncertainties as to how these panels may be received in the future. If, um, previous versus impervious, whether the county might be caught at a future date with, with obligations as far as stormor runoff. Uh, this isn't applicable today. Uh, it's, it's surmised that there may be, uh, definitions made in the future that, that may conflict with the Q's definitions. And frankly, I'm not the best person to talk to this. Our engineer, our environmental engineer can elaborate a little bit, but at the end of the day, uh, we, we've all spoken with the county about this. Everyone is just a little bit unsure how this will play out. But as written, it's, it's obligating us to sort of respond to the worst-case scenario. And that obligation is frankly, uh, economically viable. We're very concerned about. We were required to use water quality BMPs on this project, which is not standard practice for these sorts of projects. Uh, which is why, you know, I can't, I believe this and other projects. I, I assume that the county may be asked for something similar at the projects. We, we want to continue to figure out what the situation is and we, we do believe it will be resolved. And we, we don't believe that, that this measure will be required. And, uh, as you've seen my red lines there, I've, I've proposed, you know, at least giving us the opportunity to continue talking and not, not putting into our conditions today this requirement that may not be required down the road and may obliterate this project's viability. Or just removing that condition entirely. There's a condition number nine in there that allows the county to add additional stormor management practices if it believes the DQs aren't stringent enough. We believe it could use that in the future if it's not satisfied that this issue's been resolved. But asking us to commit to these very expensive measures today because of an uncertainty, uh, is, is problematic for us. And it will be problematic to other developers. I believe another developer's already caught wind of this condition and it's submitted comments to the county echoing that. So that's my, my presentation on the project itself. Um, you know, before closing out, I do want to mention that, you know, we're keenly aware that a lot of developers in the county are likely watching the outcome of this hearing. Uh, you know, despite, you know, this approval recently of, of your solar ordinance, uh, the Planning Commission has, has had trouble moving these projects forward. During our hearing, it seemed that the commissions that were opposed, uh, were explicitly stating in opposition to solar in general and weren't responding to the merits of our project in accordance with the ordinance. We also understand that the project probably feels like it's being flooded with projects right now. Or excuse me, the county probably feels like it's being flooded with projects right now. It's opened the door and you've got all this application on your app. We're sympathetic to that. I would point out that I first approached this county with our Razor's project in twenty sixteen. You guys are going to be hearing that project next month. These projects weren't materialized in response to the ordinance. They've been slowly accumulating over the last five years. And now that the ordinance is in place, we're opening our applications. During the last five years, the county's been very meticulous in developing an ordinance and, and determining how you want to respond to applications. And now I would say you are very well positioned to do so. The downside, of course, is you have this backlog of projects that you're dealing with. I just want to stress that this backlog doesn't mean that you'll continue to have project after project after project committed to this county. You know, it's getting increasingly harder to originate new solar projects in the Commonwealth. And, you know, viable land and transmission capacity is growing scarce. So, again, understand that you feel overwhelmed with projects right now. Just want to remind this body that, that there's a reason for that. It's because you, you were meticulous in your planning and you are well-equipped to deal with these projects. And we feel that this project's a very viable, positive, easy project. This is probably the least controversial project I've ever presented in all my years as a developer. We certainly thank you for your consideration of this project on its merits and hope you'll consider it and hope you'll approve it. And, uh, hope you will also consider my request of amendments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding special exception zero six, twenty twenty-one, a Whalebone Solar. Is there, hmm, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate to share a letter with board members?
You can give it to Mr. Pardon and let me go disseminate it. Could you state your name and?
Yes, sir. My name is Skylar Zunk. I live in Richmond. Uh, I'm here speaking on behalf of Conservatives for Clean Energy and the Land and Liberty Coalition. Uh, it has been a pleasure to engage with you all over the past couple of months since you guys have hinged towards completing uh, your ordinance process and, uh, as well as some of the activities that have been happening at the Planning Commission level. Conservatives for Clean Energy and Land and Liberty Coalition exist to help unite business owners, landowners, community members, and leaders like yourselves for conservative, responsible, smart, well-sighted, uh, clean energy projects in Virginia. I've had the privilege to engage, uh, at the national level on energy policy uh, and seeing a lot of energy development out west. It's our turn in Virginia to begin developing energy in a responsible way and see the many community and economic benefits associated with that. Um, I'd like to commend the Planning Commission and the board for adopting such a thorough solar ordinance. I think Caroline County can now be, uh, pointed to by other counties as a, a good representation of what a responsible um, ordinance looks like, telling solar developers and landowners, this is an appropriate place for energy development. Uh, this isn't an appropriate place. You guys have setbacks that are strong. You guys are protecting growth areas with your solar energy overlay district. Your decommissioning requirements are strong and thorough, uh, and you have smart design standards. Land and Liberty Coalition focuses a lot on, on property rights. Uh, if you own that land, if you pay for that land with, with your taxes, you should have the opportunity to do with that land what you please, so long as you're not adversely affecting your neighbors. Uh, that's something that's a core conservative principle of mine in our coalition. And we really submit that to you all as something you guys should consider as you guys begin to consider these projects on their merits. This is the fun part, where you guys get to vote yes or no on all these projects that are going to be coming to you. And I, I hope you guys consider each of them for their merits. Uh, the economic development story is also quite significant. It's millions of dollars, uh, not only in the Whalebone project, but in other projects that are coming to you, invested in the county. It's going to bring in workers. It's not going to be a, a noisy, high-traffic, uh, construction area once these projects are built. They sit quietly. They're good neighbors to have. They sit quietly. They're good neighbors to have. It's a great economic development story. This whalebone project is small. It's twelve acres. I would recommend you all to approve this project because it's a phenomenal way for the county to see how good a solar project can be as a taxpayer, as a neighbor, and as an economic driver in the county. You guys count your tax dollars very carefully. I had the privilege to listen to most of the the meeting beforehand. This is gonna be hopefully a way for you guys to fund some public services. So thank you, guys. I've shared a letter with you all that I sent to you last month. Looking forward to continue engaging with many of you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Hodge. I reside in one, two, three, eight, three South River Road in Woodford. Even though this property is not in my immediate neighborhood, it is it is within my district, Port Royal. And it is my right to register my opposition to a solar facility taking root on a site where food could be grown much more efficiently than electricity produced. Very few people in the county were aware that a solar overlay district was enacted earlier this year. And I do not feel that this tract of land should initiate a precedent for our beautiful rural county to be overrun overrun by salesmen pitching solar power and dispoiling our rural and agricultural properties and landscape. In hindsight, these projects have been disastrous in neighboring neighboring areas. Solar energy is the least efficient form of power production and the most degrading to the land. Not even considering not only considering the land upon which the the panels sit, but the implications of mining. For example, nickel destroying rainforest, lithium mining in China and Afghanistan, as well as the disposal, the toxins, and not really a clear decommissioning plan and whose responsibility it is and and expense. Whatever the political climate is that is propelling this movement, please realize it is not clean. It is not green and believe it or not, it is not good for the environment, least of all Caroline County. And I urge you not to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Good evening.
My name is Karen Carter. I'm in Port Royal District. I'm off one, three, five, nine, one Long Branch Road.
Mr. Go tell her that.
I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm not a neighbor right up against this project, but I am in the same area that it will take place. I agree with Ms. Hodge. I'm against it. There are many ways that that land can be used that are far better than what you've got planned for it or are attempting to plan for it. And I also have not heard anyone mention animals in the area of these these sites that you're planning. Food for the community. I like her ideas for that too. But I think that if you will give it more time. And it was suggested or stated earlier that you had gotten the word out to everyone. That's not true. I did not find out about this until Sunday. And I started calling my neighbors and none of them had heard of this, not a soul, and none of them were for it. Now, we are not right up against it, but we are in the same area, the same district. And nobody had heard anything about this or any of the others that are planned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to be very short. I am not in the Port Royal District. I'm out of the Red Church District representing my mother, Marion Williams. I was so glad to hear the young lady that came before me say they did not hear anything about it. A lot of information that we're being told to you that we got to the neighbors and we talked to them. I am not against solar. Let me make that clear. My problem is it's being bought to you and sold to you as it's the best thing in the world. It's the best thing in the world. My mother always told me, if anybody keep coming to you telling you something is the best thing in the world, there's something wrong along the way. I heard the young man was saying, one of my questions was, I asked Ms. Hodges, what if some of these businesses go out of business? All of these solar people coming. They're saying, oh, we're giving you this amount of money in case something happens. Well, what happens if something happened to the business before in case something happens? Caroline County will be left with the bill. Caroline County has a lot more to offer. This, like they said earlier, my biggest thing I said before, there's a food shortage in this country now. And I understand the farmers need something to lean on. There was a gentleman that made the statement, it can call it can make him money, but what about my neighbors? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Finally, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? No. We're fine. He can't respond. I thought we had to be after we asked questions, didn't he? He answered right, right? After we close, right? I'm saying, but not now. Right? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Now you can speak regarding this matter.
I guess I just want to say I'm certainly sympathetic to the concerns that were raised. I guess I'll kind of reiterate my earlier point that they didn't really seem to be aimed at this project, but rather solar in general. This, you know, this this county has adopted a solar ordinance and we believe this is a great little project. It's not cited on property that is currently a farm or is intended to be a farm anytime soon. It's been subdivided and would otherwise likely be housing a soul.
If you don't mind, I'll save you possibly a few few moments of your time. Is it's my district. I know I've already been requested by one supervisor that has not had a chance to be there. My motion is going to be to defer any decision, so supervisors have a chance to go there. And as long as you are available to meet us, try to arrange a time to meet us and hopefully whoever is going to be doing any engineering there if it were to be approved, so we can ask questions.
Yes, we'd be glad to.
And then you can come back. Yeah. But I'm just saying you don't have to sell us right now because we're not gonna decide tonight. That was my point.
Well, who said you have the rest of that time?
I I I don't need I don't need to take it if it's not gonna be satisfactory to anyone in here. I I think you.
I thought he used the most of the time already with the presentation.
Yes, I interrupted him, but he can keep speaking. He has time. I was just trying to save him steps.
Or I can be done. I think I see where this is going and I think you guys see where I was going with my points and I'd be glad to take questions now.
It's 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 not. What's the statement? Same thing? Then go right ahead, Mr. Tom. No, it was it was for, I guess, Mrs. Hodge, Mrs. Carter and the young lady representing her mother, Ms. Williams.
From Red Church.
From Red Church. Everybody, I mean, my opinion, everybody in Caroline has the ability to come and speak on any issue that's in front of Caroline. I I do have some issues when folks come from out of the county to talk. But I I don't want you to feel you can't talk just because it's not right next to you. So we're all involved in this and we all have a chance to to talk. And Skylar, Skylar Zunk, yeah, I I don't know how I got on your mailing list, but I'm on your mailing list. Conservatives for whatever. But I I thought that was interesting that I would be on your mailing list. But you said something that that also weighs in our decision and and something that I truly believe. If you have land and you pay for your land and you take care of your land, you get to do what you want to do as long as you don't affect everybody else. And I think that's where we're gonna be with that last part, don't affect anybody else. But I, like you, I wouldn't necessarily call myself a conservative, but I believe in the same things and that's what we're gonna work on here. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Seeley.
Yeah, can I? Who's the soil guy?
Soil.
And soil, who's gonna do this project soil work? I I want somebody to take me through the process of building this site.
With your regards to soil, I'm sorry.
Yeah, soil. So take me through the process of building this site. Who can do that? Yep. No, how it gets constructed. Day one to to day X finished.
We could give you.
No, it's already clear cut. It's already.
In general, yes, it's already been clear cut. It's fairly flat land.
Is the top, what happens to the, do you work right on top of the ground?
We we work the contours.
No, no, no. Do you work right on top of the ground or do you, what happens to the topsoil? I mean, you realize this is a public hearing on solar, so we're gonna ask you a myriad of questions. You've done these before, right? So what happens first?
So to introduce myself first, I'm Sean below civil engineer on the project. We've been helping Solyunesco review a lot of the initial project constraints and wetlands and other environmental aspects as well as some civil engineering aspects. Kind of get to your point, yeah, when when we look at projects, our goal as a civil engineer is to minimize grading. And so we've looked at some of the slopes throughout this project and they're generally within the tolerances of the tracker systems that we use. So we anticipate very minimal grading within the project area other than just building erosion and sediment control ponds and other measures around the perimeter of the project to protect those downstream areas.
So are you grading everything down to below the topsoil level?
Not sure what you mean by grading it.
Are you taking all the topsoil off to work on the site?
No, our our preference is to maintain as much existing vegetation as possible so that as we work in those areas, it helps protect the work area that we have. So we don't have to correct any sort of onsite erosion within our work area. So maintaining existing topsoil and keeping existing vegetation there is a is a big priority.
Because you talk about in the write-up, you this is you guys' write-up, right? This this whole section we got from you guys, right?
It's a combination, I think, between Solyunesco and Kim Lee Moore. The application, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm talking about the whole, what's the name of this report that we've got?
The application back.
Special exception parade application, well-boned solar project, well-boned, it doesn't really. It doesn't really say who prepared this.
Yes, sir. We we prepared it, yes.
Because you talk about moving topsoil and putting it back at the end of the project.
I think what it says is any topsoil that's removed will be put back and that commitment's been strengthened. It doesn't imply that we will be removing any necessarily, or certainly not all. That wasn't the intention that sentence I'm not having a little trouble following the exact sentence that you're referring to, but.
I I can address that a little bit more as well. I I would say so topsoil is your best condition for seeding grass, right? Getting it to Germany.
Don't disagree. That's why I'm I'm getting to what's the process
Right.
to build this site.
Okay, so the first thing we wanted to do is protect the perimeter of the project. The state requires that as far as the erosion sediment control permit that we have to obtain. So before we do any work within the project, we have to protect protect the perimeter. So that includes erosion sediment control ditches, ponds, silt fence, those sort of typical measures that you'll see almost on any development project. So when we do that sort of grading, our preference is to strip off that topsoil that's there today, do the grading activities because we're gonna be mixing soil and moving it around and compacting the soil.
So you are gonna come, you are gonna vibratory compact the top, the soil?
Not vibratory compact, probably just sort of roll it so that we can keep the soil down. As we build ponds and ditches, you know, we want those to be stable when there is a rainstorm. And so we do need that soil sort of compacted so the water doesn't penetrate into the pond banks and compromise.
What about the site where the solar panels go? Does that get compacted also?
If we're not doing any grading, there's no necessary need to go out and and compact the site. When we do our structural analysis, we typically sort of ignore the top one foot of soil as far as compaction from a structural standpoint. So we pretend that foot isn't there. So we don't have to compact it and maintain that compaction throughout the life of the project. And we're only utilizing from a structural standpoint, everything below that one foot. So we don't have to compact that top soil for anything that that's structured.
Don't have to or won't?
Well, anything we compact it's just more cost or any grading we do is just more cost for the project. So we do minimize that and and it's not a requirement for our structural design. But yeah, we've been doing solar projects in the state here for about five years. So we do go through a process to try and minimize earthwork activities.
Just to clarify, when you have a field like that's already grass.
Yep.
Typically, you'll just take it, take a tractor with the pile driver, put your pole in, drive the pole with the tractor over eight feet, drive the next pole with the tractor over eight, repeat four thousand times.
Yeah, however many of the, yeah, we probably won't have four thousand on this project.
I agree, hyperbole, but
Yep.
but that's when you have a relatively flat grassed area, that's how it typically goes.
Yep, and there's no need to.
And I think he's one asking that, you know, step one, identify your perimeter, do it, do what you said. Step two, layout, you know, step three, bring in the, drive your poles, step four, make make the 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 frames for it, you know. Step sixteen, set your panels. In the last step, you tie in your transformer, whatever.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's asking for.
Yeah, for sites that are relatively flat like this, it is very quick to get to sort of the above-ground infrastructure, like the poles and the tracker systems and the panels and the cabling that happens underneath the panels to connect everything together. And that all gets combined. And there is some trenching required to sort of get the electric to some of our other equipment. But that's mostly done underground, you know, in a trench and then that's recompacted.
I'm asking about the topsoil because
Yeah.
and the steps and the steps was I wanted to hear how you were gonna get there, not necessarily. But tell me about the calculations you're gonna use. These panels sit basically parallel to the ground most of the day.
Yeah.
So when you, when you have a rainy event, the ground underneath there is impervious because the panel's covering, correct?
No.
Well, the panels sit in parallel to the ground. It's like a, it's like a outdoor shed. What
Sure.
stormwater calculations and and what are you using as pervious and impervious cover for your calculations? Do those panels, since they cover the ground completely, do they count as pervious or impervious cover?
To directly answer your question, they count as pervious cover. And that is what DEQ's interpretation is for all solar projects, where DEQ is the stormwater authority, which would be here in Caroline as well. So the stormwater department of DEQ does regulate solar projects as pervious. We do have to take into account the posts that are physically on the ground. We do have to take into account the posts that are physically on the ground, the roads that are, you know, we typically have gravel roads through the project. And then the pads that are some of our equipment sit on is counted towards our impervious area.
So if you were under the panel during a rainstorm, you'd get wet?
Your feet would definitely get wet.
Well, they're longer than you are tall, the ones I've seen.
Yeah, they'll say, so they do rotate throughout the day, yeah. So in the morning, you know, they're facing east and they follow the sun throughout the day. So if it rains in the middle of the day, you know, every hour it's dripping in a different location onto the grass.
And I'm gonna get to that in a minute, because now that you brought that up, that's a good point. So now the panel is later in the day and the water runs like a. Three, like a pitched roof, correct? So that water runs as a drip edge to the ground, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So all of the water for that square footage of that panel then runs off that panel to one place on the ground. Not under the panel necessarily, but depending on the slope of the land. You could actually start an edge drip down the whole row of panels that then starts to create an erosion point, correct?
You would have to have a very significant rain event, I guess, to respond to that, so.
What's a sig- give me your definition of significant.
A hundred plus year event, I would imagine. So when, when the panels are on an angle, you're only going to get the water that falls directly on that panel.
Okay, let's back up. How long are your panels?
Seven to eight feet long.
Okay, so eight feet.
Seven to eight feet total, so when they're at an angle and it's raining, assuming it's raining straight down, obviously an angle would change that.
Right, I could do the geometry for you if you'd like.
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's like this and raining this way, it could be none, but, um, yeah. So assuming it falls straight, it's gonna be less than seven to eight feet falling directly on that panel and then sliding off. And it's like a sheet float, so you're not gonna get.
It's, no, it's a sheet flow, which is very different than, than an actual rain event where you're actually hitting pervious ground. Because you're actually taking that sheet effect from that panel. There's a, you're a civil engineer, there's a formula for sheet effect of water coming off a roof and what that does to the ground. Um, that effect is very different than a rain event. Do we agree on that?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, just so, just trying to be clear, so that effect is different on the ground than a rain event on the ground, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. So the effect is different after, when you have a row of these, what do you think your longest row will be?
Um, two to three hundred feet long, yeah.
So the cover on that two, three hundred feet will give you six feet at an angle of complete coverage? That's quite a big roof of impervious cover that's shedding water.
Yeah, but it's also distributed over three hundred feet.
Well, it's distributed over probably about two inches and whatever the length of that row is.
Yeah.
If you watch water come off a roof without gutters, you know what happens.
Yeah, the roof is also significantly longer than our panels would be.
Right, but it's still, it's still not a normal pervious cover kind of rain event.
Yeah, I think I see the point you're talking about where you'll get a potential issue where along that drip edge. Over time, it could erode a ditch that, you know, could therefore increase erosion throughout the life of the project. There is a different type of system out there for solar called fixed tilt. Where instead of it following the sun and tracking, it is stationary and faces south the whole time. So it just sits there on the slope, doesn't move. So to your point, I think that's definitely more of a concern in a project like that where you have multiple panels. I mean, it could be a ten-foot length because it's fixed tilt, it's less structurally involved. There's not a lot of complicated motors turning the panels. In those types of projects, we do review what could happen as that water comes off. Because the panels aren't moving, every storm event, no matter what, it's hitting that same edge. And we have seen that have issues where sometimes we have to go back and correct those items. On a tracker system where literally every rainstorm could be falling in a different location. It, it's much less of a concern and, and you would almost have to create a drip edge completely under the panels. Of gravel or something more impervious than what's there today. Which would create more runoff and more concerns for phosphorus getting into the Chesapeake Bay.
Don't even, don't even, don't even go there, we're not talking, we're talking water event.
Yeah.
We're talking, I'll give you the panel moves. The panel only moves so much an hour in, in the same track every day. But you do agree that, that you can have a rain event that actually created enough runoff? That you could create a ditch in the ground along that panel edge?
I don't think in one rain event.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying over time, you could have rain events that actually erode. I mean, it's just like taking a, a garden hose and running it across the wa- running it across the ground all the time. And if you put a spray head on, it's even worse. So you're gonna have some increased pressure because it's dripping, you know? We can do the physics of the water drop falling to the ground if you want, we can, you know. We're gonna have that sheet of water, that sheet, because it is sheet rolling off, coming to the ground. And I'm concerned about long-term, what happens, because it's, it, it, there's a grain to that, to that site.
Yeah, I'll add too, as far as where that water i- is falling onto, to maybe ease some of your concerns. Our, our grass we have out there is not, let's call it.
We're gonna talk about grass since you brought it up. You, you, in, in your, in your vegetative section, three point six. You talk about, once the ground cover is established, one, two, three years after planting. Now, what is, let me ask you, what are we, who determines the density of that grass? Who's the overall judge of whether it's sufficient or not sufficient and what is, what are we measuring that density against?
So there's some general definitions in DEQ that, on the erosion sediment control side, that define what stabilized is for construction projects. Not just solar, any sort of construction project. Um, and, and that'll come down to the county inspectors or the DEQ inspectors.
County or DEQ, tell me which one?
It'd be the county inspectors.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we decide that that density's not good enough?
Yeah, and those inspectors are certified by the state, so they go through a training process to be able to review projects for stability.
So what inspector are you talking about, E and S?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have to stabilize the project with grass before we can go fully into our operational phase. And convert all of our facilities over to stormwater.
So we're not talking about broom straw, we're talking about real grass.
Yeah, native, um, mixed grass of, you know, what we would propose during the site plan process.
Let's talk a little bit about decommissioning. The subject landowner preferences described below. So it doesn't say you guys will decommission this. It says, subject to the landowner's preferences as described below. So the landowner gets to pick who takes this site down?
I'm not sure you referred to, could you?
Section three point eight point one.
Could you give me a little context with that sentence?
It says, the project will remove all physical improvements, material equipment related to solar, energy generation, both service and subservice components. Subject to the landowner's preference as described below.
That sounds.
Your document.
That sounds like that may be a typo then, I'm not, that sounds like.
So what's the typo?
Anything to do with the landowner having any, any say over decommissioning. I think what that was intended to say was if there is a fence or a non-solar related or, or road or dirt road or gravel road. That, that the landowner said, I'd like to keep that and it wasn't, uh, and it wasn't.
Well, let me, it goes on to say the project will be de-energized, the system.
Yeah.
And isolated from the electrical transmission system, so it goes right from the owner's preference to that. So that leads me to believe that the landowner has some sort of preference.
Sure, so let me, let me clarify right now on the record, that sounds like a typo. I believe that that was supposed to continue to say something along the lines of. If there is a non-solar energy generating piece of infrastructure that the landlord wants to keep. And it's not a foul of anything that the county wo- wouldn't allow. Uh, we, we might leave that in place as opposed to decommissioning, for example, a benzoyl. That, that is what that was intended to say, it sounds like.
This is, this is what's in front of us.
That, that starts with, the, the beginning of that sentence says the project will, the project will be the ones responsible.
Mr. Chairman, considering, considering Mrs. Long is gonna make a motion to defer the, can we defer some of these questions?
I mean, what do, here's my question, what are we gonna defer them to?
To the next time, yeah, the next time.
So we're gonna do another public hearing?
No, we closed the public hearing, that's over.
So we're just gonna, so we're gonna do questions on this at the next.
You get to ask him as many questions as you want to, because we, we asked, we did the public hearing, that's over.
Okay. Because I'm not close to being done, just so you know.
I imagine, and I look forward to discussing further, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Because I also have some stuff for Mr. Fincham, because I think there are probably one, two, three, four, five. Different conditions that we need to talk about.
Just ask him a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I drove around the property that you had there and when we discussed this later, I do want to discuss the impact on. Um, wildlife there. Um, I noticed that there is a. Um, look like, it looks like a. A marsh in the middle of the, in the back of where you're proposing the panel, that goes down to the pond, in the pond. Um, I, I want you to take a look at that, because I, I do think there may be some runoff issues there that, that we wanna come back to. Which we'll come back to later, but while you're doing your research and of course I saw the two neighbors from the top of the hill. I could see their house clearly, I don't think there's enough vegetation, well, to make sure, I'm sure they've been looking at panels for a while. So, and then the. The, the land appears to have a slope to the front and the back and then the marsh in the middle where he cleared and. Put the stack of wood on top of the hill. I, I want you to take a look at that also, I think there may be some issues there.
The marsh runs to the middle, we, we did a, by that, we did. The USAC, um, uh, and then that sparked on our site plan.
I understand, I, I saw, I just want you to come back and, you don't have to address it now, I'm just giving you some things that I'm going to, to make sure, I wanna be clear on. When you return, because it's gonna be deferred, so I don't think we should spend too much more time, but I just wanted to give you my thought.
Appreciate that.
Just the black and then I'll yield this long for defer.
Um, thank you for coming. Um, I just have a, a couple of just general concerns, because, um, I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting. But, um, when supervisors from around the state met and, and at the Baco Conference, solar was a, was a big topic. Uh, obviously, it's, it's, you know, um, different supervisors have different opinions on it. And, uh, the, the biggest concern that solar has had, uh, from talking to different people is the erosion. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not gonna pretend to be one. Um, but the, that's a major, major concern. Um, you know, there are other concerns with it, but as far as, you know, um, we've just seen some, you know, news stories. All you have to do is Google solar in Virginia and you, you, you come up with stories of nightmares. You see what's happened in Louisa, what's happened a little bit in Spalsylvania and, you know, um, I, I think these projects could be, um, good projects. But when you start talking about massive erosion into creeks on people's property, that is, that's not good, that's not good. Um, and, and so that is gonna be a major concern of mine, um, moving forward. Um, that being said, to the board, my only concern to the board is, um, I do wish, um, I'm not necessarily, uh. Do wish that yours was not the first one that comes to us, because I'll be honest with you, um. I think each one of these projects is gonna be a case by case basis. I have some concerns about this, but at the same time, this is one of those projects to me that would fit into a category of, okay. I mean, this, this, this might make sense. Um, so, I, I, I don't want this, this is in any way, if this is, gets approved for me, this is not a precedent. And, and, um, as for board, we've gone through a lot of workings on some of this stuff. So if we're gonna sit there and just reject every solar project, then why do we go through that, why do we go through that? Um, I think that the rules that we made as a board, um, are a case by case basis. And it wasn't to say every single solar project's gonna get rejected, nor is it to say for me that every single, I'm gonna approve every single solar project. Because it, it, it depends on where it goes. Um, so, um, with that in mind, I guess for me, the biggest, the biggest question I have. And I wanna make sure that that erosion, and I will go out and visit the site as well. Um, I wanna make sure that that erosion aspect is, uh, is taken care of. The only other question, maybe you can answer really briefly for me, is as the technology on these things is gonna change. Um, I, I don't think there's, I mean, companies, people are, are trying to come up with new and better panels that are more efficient. I think you're limited by silicone right now and how much efficiency you can get out of it, and then you have battery storage. What happens when that, when, when, when that breakthrough happens as far as, is there plans in place for you guys as far as to replace them? Or there's a technology coming out and all of a sudden you're at three megawatts right now, but on this piece of land? Because you guys can do about two hundred and fifty homes on ten acres of, of land, um, is what we heard down at the, um, at the conference. So is, do you guys have a plan in place as the technology changes and you can become more efficient to replace the panels or? So sure, so we get that question a lot, uh, short answer is no, I don't know if any precedent for that. You know, these investments are all front looking. We, we are investing a large amount of money to build this project and then they're just producing free electricity. Okay. So we're basically building a whole new project, it would have to be a, a tremendous increase in efficiency. And in this case, we know from our connection process that we can't go larger than three. So there would be no advantage to trying to. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Mrs. Long?
Yes, and I would, I would ask Mr. Fincham to contact you and we'll set up a time to, that works for your engineer. And your contractor, uh, to meet out there. Hopefully we'll have nice weather.
Sure.
And anyone who wants to come will meet out there, bring all your questions and Mr. Black is.
Oh, no, they, we have to do in groups because of the, the forum situation, right?
The what?
We did this in the planning commission, we had to do groups too.
We could be outside. Yeah, but some of, yeah, we are limited also by only three board members at a time, but I don't think everybody's gonna be coming. Um, because I know Mr. Underwood's already been there.
Sorry to break it up, a war.
And then we can, can answer these questions, not hold everybody up any, any longer. But Mr. Black is right, each application, just like a business application, has to be considered individually on its merits. So I'm sort of glad we're starting with this one, it's the smallest one, so, um, so that's good. And I look forward to hearing the data from Mr. Finch. Uh, do you agree, is it okay if I make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to defer?
Sure, I do, those who have agreed on it, that's, that's, makes sense to me, you're opposing, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we defer until after a site visit.
There's a motion and a second that we defer special exception zero six twenty twenty one.
To our next meeting after site visit?
To our next meeting after the site visit. So then we'll defer to, is it January eleventh, I believe, twenty twenty two?
I'm just wondering if we shouldn't go to the.
We have two meetings in, anywhere. Alright, then there's a motion to defer to the second meeting in January, which is the twenty fifth of January, twenty twenty two. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we will defer this until January twenty fifth. Meeting, board suffice, twenty twenty two.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to new business, remember round of understanding with, uh, for use of former Lady Smith Elementary School. By Caroline County.
Mister, could I just, could I just make a motion? I, I move that we do not enter into the MOU as presented to us for the Lady Smith school.
Right, there, I'm Mr. Scully, how are you?
Um, fine, I'll make this short, if you wanna make a motion, I would recommend a motion to, to withdraw from the current MOU. Effective December thirty first, twenty twenty one. from the current MOU effective December 31st, 2021, um, and, and leave it that simple.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Long, you want to change?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we withdraw from the current MOU effective December the 31st, 2021.
Alright, there's a motion that we withdraw from the Memorandum of Understanding for use of former Lady Smith Elementary Schools by Caroline County. Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
There's a second. Alright, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a, uh, just a real quick question. I'm not necessarily opposed to this. But so, I mean, for the people like when Mr. Donnell needs uh, for basketball and stuff, we can still rent that facility, right?
That was, we've had conversations with Dr. Calverick about renting rooms and or the gym as needed.
Okay.
So.
So he has, we have a plan in place for when we have basketball leagues and so forth, and we have multiple, you know, there's, there's a place for these kids to go, correct? This isn't going to bottleneck us in any way, shape or form.
Yes, we do have a plan. Matter of fact, we are currently using the facilities now. Um, because we, we uh, we've just started up our new basketball league, so we are currently operating through the schools right now. So, and they have granted us permission.
This is, this is better.
We don't own the gym. We don't own that gym.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, but we still use it. We don't own it, but we still use it. Some of the MOU. Yeah, right. Oh, okay. Okay. Alright, got you. Okay, sorry.
Any other questions regarding the MOU and the motion?
Don't go too far.
If not, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries that we withdraw from the MOU as of December 31st, 2021.
Well, Mr. Howard, say that's fine.
Yes, yes. He's, that's what you told him to hold.
I don't, I don't think there's any, he's been saying he needed software.
Eight days.
Did we get a cost?
On to eight days.
Alright, come up, come up here so we can explain part of, part of eight days.
On to. Eight is the Civic Plus thing. Yes.
Right, as well as the Muni code, which Civic, Civic Plus now uh, owns. Uh, we would like to, we'd already been contemplating moving uh, to Muni code anyway, and uh, Civic Plus is offering a deal that runs out uh, by the end of this year, so uh, it's a little rushed, but we needed to get it before you tonight to take advantage of that, that offer. We want to, um, so we'd like to convert from general code to, to Muni code uh, for our, our county ordinances on land. Mrs. Hall and I uh, had a Zoom meeting with uh, Muni code yesterday and um, just feel like the product is, is better. Uh, the, there are many localities. I think there's 140 localities in Virginia that use Muni code, including most of our neighbors, Hanover, Spotsia, Stafford, King George, one and one. Uh, the cost uh, depends on uh, how many pages of changes you made, but uh, the first year uh, it's $950. Uh, after that, it would probably go up around.
So moved. Second.
There's, alright, so there's a motion that we um, move to Muni code internet software package, second by Mr. Sealy.
That's for both, both for Donnell and for.
Hold on.
Oh, oh, discussion?
Discussion, yes. Um, real quick, I mean, the only, the only issue I have right now is who's going to input the information on this?
On Muni code?
Or, or the Civic rec, because.
We've been, we've been working, I mean, I think that's going to be set up, so most of that will be run by uh, the Parks and Rec Department.
We, yes, okay. We're not going to have to have an offline discussion, but okay.
It's their programs and it, and it'll be a lot of online registration. They'll put all their things there. It's, it's a lot friendlier than anything we currently have for them to use.
Set it up and they roll.
Call the question?
Call for the, um, vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Division in the House, Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Mr. Forehand votes aye, Mr. Black.
Nay.
Mr. Black votes nay, Mr. Sealy.
Aye.
Ms. Sealy votes aye, Ms. Long.
Aye.
Ms. Long votes aye, Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion carries five to one. Alright, item eight, Amos Long, I believe you, I mean, seven, eight. You took it out of the agenda, so.
Yes, I was asked to take it out of the agendas to allow public comment. And I think we just need to make sure that people understand and um, that it's the surveying, is, this is a requirement to proceed with this permit. And um, also I need to talk to Mr. Sheville sometime to update me on where we are on everything there. So, but that's, that's why I asked for it to be pulled. I realize this isn't something that we have to do to go to phase two of the permitting plan. Am I correct, Mr. Sheville? You don't have to walk down to shake your hair. It's part of the permitting. Alright, now you do have to come down here.
So we have submitted the joint permit application to DEQ. Um, they've been somewhat slow due to COVID. Um, they're still not having meetings. Um, they are planning, I've got a meeting with them beginning of January uh, to uh, discuss uh, the outcomes of a study that was done. We've got Prince George County, Chesterfield County, and Caroline County all going through the process at the same time. So uh, beyond, BMRS, uh, the Virginia Marine Institute has actually just finished up a study and has given that report to DEQ. So there's discussion on that particular report. So for us, we know we're getting the permit. It's just a matter of what are the requirements going to be um, to be able to utilize that permit? So one of the things they're talking about now is compensation for loss of fish and larvae. Um, and how they would want to administer that. So there's nothing in the code that necessarily does that. So we will get that hopefully within the next six months or so, um, once they're done going through their process. So it's just their process they have to go through. Um, they also, uh, their, the Secretary of Natural Resources resigned, so they've got a new one to be appointed by the new governor. So it's going to take a little bit of time to get through that process. But there, the whole thing of moving forward with acquiring the property, we spent a million dollars in permitting on two specific sites. That's the intake site, um, that was instrumental because of the location uh, and the depth and the width of the water and the wetlands that protected across. And then the other one really is the, the treatment site itself, uh, and just trying to secure those. So that shows DEQ that we are uh, that we are proceeding with our project in that it shows a strong front that this isn't something we're just getting a permit and going to put it in our pocket. So both Chesterfield and Prince George have secured their locations as well. So it's just kind of being in suit and following uh, through that process to show DEQ that we're serious. This is not something we're just going to get a permit and set on for 20 years and not do anything. So that would be in Cornwall Church, um, Route One South.
Is there any?
We've had to do, and we've already done wetland delineations, we've done endangered species, um, historical resources. Yeah, all that's been done on both sites.
Yeah, but that doesn't necessarily require the treatment plant to be in Cornwall Church.
That's, we had to do a study that actually showed where the plant is, and we had to look at the entire routing of the water line. So we've permitted, we, we, we haven't permitted, but we've had to look through all of the engineering and go through all of the wetlands delineations, the endangered species for everything from start to end.
What if, what if, what if we have uh, what if, what if we have discussions with other localities who may help with the cost and whatnot and change the route?
Then we would have to go back to the EQ and re-study a new route.
Yes, the route study, not the intake study.
Correct.
The intake study.
We'll have the intake. We just had to show there's going to be a plant that's associated with that, so we can change that. Yeah. So we, we're, you know, by the time, we're, we're guessing it's going to be three, four months before we can get all the survey information back and completed and have a, a proposed plat to be able to come back, um, to begin that process. So we're probably in a year-long process from starting now from start to end.
I, I would think we have, we have some board discussion and decisions to make as we go forward. And, and some, some uh, discussions outside of the county before we go forward. But I think this, this final number is like 120 million dollars. Right?
That was for a 13 and a half million gallon plant and line, so that was, that was for full build. That we're going to build it in three phases.
I mean, I think what they're saying, I mean, this is like building a house. Show me the plans that you're going to build. And we, I know that we've got to put something in the river, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Sheville.
Yeah.
Um, at some point, so we've got to have some progress to get the permit in, because we talked about this a year ago about all the, I mean, we're, we may not actually, at some point, actually do all the, all the the buildings that we're actually proposing are what we think they are today. I don't think it precludes us from moving the water treatment plant somewhere else if something else came along.
Yeah, but that's what we just said. We have to do a new study.
We have to do a new study, but we.
And that's fine.
Right.
But, but, but we need to make sure. I, I have concerns with the 120 million dollars, and I think that's the low number.
Well, we all have concerns with that.
I think we need to have more discussions with a lot of, of different peoples and entities.
But that, how does that preclude us from moving forward with this though? I don't disagree, but how does that?
It doesn't preclude us from moving forward. I, I'm just saying we need to have more discussions as a board.
So we can get a motion then on either?
I was ready to go before.
So more discussions needed, but we feel, well, to be forward with the survey, even the, even though it's not needed at this moment for the permit.
Joey's saying it's going to take three to six months to get, and we have to have that to turn in the rest of the permit, because you have to show a blueprint of what everything's going to look like. And at some point, we got to put something in the water, which isn't that far after that, is my, is my take, is what I remember.
The, the permit's good for 10 years, so you, you've got to, because it's going through the whole process. So the reason why it's called a joint permit application is because it goes to all the regulatory agencies. So this will allow us to get there and give us a permit to get in the river one time, get all of our stuff in the river and get out of it, so we don't ever have to get into that again. So um, you know, there's, there's new regulatory requirements coming around. Um, you know, those are new things that could be, you know, you'd have to go back and probably have to re-permit um, through that process and then meet any new regulations and requirements that might be out there.
Right, because, because our goal is basically to put a straw in the river.
Correct.
That's the only water source left.
We have.
Option to.
Correct.
So all we want to do is put that straw in and say we've got something reserved, and then we can work out some other things.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make to make a motion that we approve the engineering task contract for surveying services for the Rappaniff River intake and water treatment plant.
Second, second. The motion has been uh, moved in properly, second that we have approved the contract for the surveying services for the Rappaniff River. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, board, let me say earlier, I had a note here to add to the agenda discussion about broadband that I did not, that I did not put on the.
On the agenda?
If you would allow me to, I'd like to put that on the agenda as item, um, as item right now. Oh, I did, yeah. It's, I, it's eight eight.
David, do you want to? We had a discussion prior to the meeting and Mr. our broadband committee chair, and I just lost your name. It's gone.
Jason.
Jason, if you guys want to come up, let's, let's have this discussion about what we think we can do to leverage this forward a little quicker and get an application ready.
Now, in talking with representatives, the HCD at the announcement ceremony, uh, it was brought to our attention that we had a good application, a strong application by Meritson and made very economical, good sense. Prices were good. Our contribution was strong. Uh, we had an extremely strong application, but because we were unable to submit an application for a single grant cycle that would completely give us full coverage of the county, um, we were scored down for that. That put us below the cutoff, so our, our application was denied. Um, however, it was just because of the strength and the well-prepared application that we had submitted that we resubmitted working out that one detail. So we're, we're challenged with about, I think, 300 and 390 or so homes uh, in the northern part of the uh, area west of 95 that ended up causing the entire application to be denied uh, because we could not say that we would get universal coverage for the entire county under one single grant. Uh, so uh, in talking with members of the broadband committee, uh, we're questioning whether we should go um, uh, with a RFP, uh, open it up to contractors to provide service to everything west of 95 that's not currently served and allow contractors uh, or providers to, to respond to that RFP. Um, that would allow us, if we did it quickly enough, we could get into the next grant cycle with a grant application that would provide universal coverage to the entire county.
When is the grant, next grant cycle?
It hasn't officially been announced, uh, but we would assume that somewhere around the 15th of September, 14th of September, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Next year. Mr. Chair, would, would, you know where, where we finish?
I, I do not. I know that uh, we were one of the 11 counties that did not make the cut.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're pretty, we stick out pretty well on the map of Virginia now. Um, is there, is there a?
I would say, Mr. Black, that the, the map of Virginia that was used in the ceremony is kind of misleading because it.
No doubt, no doubt.
Leads people to believe that there will be universal broadband coverage across the state with the exception of our counties by 2022. Most of those projects are probably in actuality several years.
Oh, yeah, I, I get it. Well, but just one, one question. Is there a way, Mr. Parton, or um, that, because people are gonna, people are gonna want to know, and people have been working on this hard. And obviously it was devastating news. I'm sure it was most devastating to you guys because how hard you worked. I mean, you guys put a lot of time in. Is there a way we can get kind of the proper information out there as to why this has happened? Because in essence, it comes down to, no? No, awesome. Okay.
Mr. Sam.
Yes.
Was, was it in any of the application requirements, or was it known before that they're seeking universal coverage of an entire county with a grant application?
Uh, it was mentioned, uh, it's been mentioned in the last several grant cycles, including the one that we were successful in as being a, a goal. Um, it changed to more of a higher priority, and in fact, the scoring of the applications changed when the, when the uh, grant cycle went from 59 million to 759 million. So when that big uh, influx of federal dollars came in, um, that's when the, they changed the scoring of it and, and basically. We knew that was going to be a challenge because of the issues that we were having getting information from one of the partners uh, that we were working with. Uh, so we addressed that question early with DHCD. Uh, and DHCD advised us at that time, as long as we took a tiered approach and mentioned clearly in the con, in the uh, application that while this application will not attain universal coverage, we've already discussed with the partner to a second tier that would allow us to attain that the following year. So we did that. Um, however, when it came down to the scoring, that wasn't good enough.
Now, I, I believe we were, I didn't write the grants. I, I don't, I don't know per se, but I, I do understand the strategy. We were told that we could do a tiered approach, and we did a tiered approach with the, the plan we submitted at how we were going to cover those other houses.
And when?
And when, which was next year. So having done that, followed the rules, permission or, or I guess a blessing from um, the ACD, we then are now penalized because we didn't do everything in one shot.
And that, that direction to, to take the tiered approach was actually made uh, by the suggestion on Chandler Bond with the ACD. So we followed his direction, but it wasn't good enough. Um, so my question is. Um, so my question is, so immediately, we started talking with the two partners. Um, and it sounds like some of the challenges that we've had in the past with one particular partner. Uh, is gonna be there again. Uh, and so for that reason. We can't delay six months getting numbers or a message back that they're not gonna participate. Uh, which would put us too late in the cycle to find some. So, um, in talking with the committee, uh, members, it, it appears that, that. They're in favor of us going out to RFP for someone, a partner. Uh, hopefully we'll have multiple responses that we can grade. Um, that would be willing to cover. The area that we need to attain universal coverage. Uh, and work with our. Other partner and hopefully have. An application next, next grant cycle that would, would attain it.
And that, that RFP would be for fiber?
It, uh, would, if we follow the, the, the plan for universal coverage and the strategic plan, it would be for fiber, thank you.
That, that is our. That is our first goal inside of our strategic plan is to put fiber to the premises. There are lesser ones inside of our strategic plan, but our number one thing is to bring fiber. To the premises at everybody's, uh, location. The one thing I would like to say about the fiber or the, uh, RFP, this would give the, um. Two partners, the ability to bid on it at that point in time, or come back to us with a proposal. And would allow us to put a deadline in place to say, we need these numbers by this date. So that way we don't keep slipping and slipping to where we actually put the next grant cycle in jeopardy.
Now, can. Does, does broadband have more than one definition?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Okay. Can broadband be achieved via cell signal?
According to the HCD and VADI, no.
No, it's got, it's got an up speed and a down speed that you must meet to be considered broadband.
So you need actually. Something in the ground, whether it's fiber, whether it's a, a cable, cable wire.
Either fiber or, or coax, fiber, hot.
Now, I know that map is absolute toilet paper. Because I. I've been those places and. I know they're not running a wire through Brock. To a valley supporting one home.
They can use a hybrid fiber installation, uh, with, with wireless and attain gigabit speed. Uh, the. One of the. Primary recipients of the award money. Uh, on their own website. Uh, advertises a speed of a hundred megabits up and down. Which is way faster than cellular, uh, and, and advantageous, but according to VADI, um. Wireless, uh, cell signals, DSL, uh, and satellite are not, not considered broadband.
So the, the last mile tower system that's across the river. That we. That was run by the Indian Reservation, that would.
Yes, if they can, if, if, if they can get a hundred over a hundred. You know, through the air and finish it out with fiber and get an overall speed of a hundred over a hundred, yes, that would, would qualify for VADI.
Thank you.
Mr. Barley, anything? Jason? You're comfortable with what we?
Yes, sir, and we've also talked to several committee members. Um, about going out to the RFP, we wanted to, that's the reason we wanted to show up today, so that way we can go out to RFP. And hope to bring that back to you guys at your next meeting. With what we wanna propose out, so that way we can get going on this fast, rather than, you know, elongating this entire process.
Okay, I'm, I would also ask the board to, uh, allow the committee, as long as there's no cost involved. To pursue whatever action we may need to do to find out what happened in this grant. And maybe move this grant along.
Yeah, and speaking with Chandler, they, they intend follow-up calls with all the localities, including us, he said we would be receiving a call and, and. In that, he would discuss where we fell short and what we can do to make any improvements.
Yeah, all of that federal money hasn't been allocated yet. Mr. Sandler, why is it that we don't, I don't mean to cut across your flow, why is it that we don't get a written report regarding the grant that says that? This is. What we were looking for, this is what you've set forth, and this is what needs to be. Either updated, changed, or.
We can, we can certainly request that from the HCD.
I think anytime we, we don't get a, a grant or something that we apply for, we ought to know. Uh, the reason why we didn't get it. And not speculation.
The only thing we have at this point is verbally what we're told.
I understand what you have now, just saying. What would be prudent is for us to. Have something clearly in writing, so that, that we can make sure that we incorporate whatever is necessary. For, uh, a better grant.
And I, and we were, you know, again, acting on just what we were told verbally. Uh, we, he's, we were told we had a strong application, address the universal coverage and, and resubmit. So, uh, and, but we will be receiving follow-up calls, I'm not sure if we're receiving anything in writing.
And just to be fair, just so that way everybody knows what the timeline is, we actually found this out yesterday at about three or four o'clock in the afternoon. And that's the reason we've gotten together with several broadband committee members that we could get on the phone, we actually wanna try and have an emergency meeting. Next week or the following week to figure this out, but with the holidays right here, we've gotta work with everybody's schedule. But that's why we wanted to get in front of you guys tonight. And, uh, we talked to Mr. Sealy about trying to get on the agenda to try and get this spearheaded move forward. So that way we are not elongating this process, we wanna get this taken care of as soon as possible.
Is there, can I just add, Mr. Thomas?
Excuse me?
Mr. Andrew.
Yes.
Can we put out a, Mr. Parton, can we put out a general letter saying that we're working hard diligently and we're disappointed, so that way people think that we're no underst, and understand that we're working hard? I mean, cause people are, people are seriously disappointed by this, I mean, and there's this, there's this idea out there that we're not working hard, which I know we aren't, I mean, we are working very hard. So.
And there's this deceptive map that shows that.
Yeah, right, and then the, the map is.
The hollers of western, uh, Virginia.
I think some information you could put out there to the general public. That. I mean, I don't know what you concluded, but the people need to know, they can be put on social media pages and so forth, here's a re, reaction, cause. It, it, it's right now, the information, like, we're getting skewer that we are not, we haven't done anything, and a lot of people just don't know. And, um, I think we do need to put something out there.
Is that doable, Mr. Cully? Mr. Part? Alright, thank you, gentlemen. Alright, last item. Yeah. Alright, last item on the agenda is approval of, uh. Funding for the new position. Uh, position, the public works slash construction manager, combination planning and building. Mr. Cully?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of board, uh, Alan prepared a, a memo that details the basic costs for these. Uh. Positions, they graded out the, uh, public works, construction managers, grade four. Um, so the total reoccurring cost for that's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, and there would be a one-time cost for, uh, purchase of a vehicle. Uh, for that person, uh, truck for that person to use.
I thought we had a vehicle.
Then we have a position, we wouldn't have the vehicle, Al, thanks.
I thought, Mr. Whiteman said we had a vehicle.
No, I said for the plan reviewer, didn't need a vehicle.
Plan reviewer doesn't need a vehicle, this is the public works.
Oh, the structure, yes.
We, we, we don't have a vehicle in, in public works that's, uh. Available for that, uh, the plans reviewer grades out of the grade twenty-one. On the total reoccurring cost for that's eighty-nine thousand, uh, four hundred and sixty-one, and there is no request for a vehicle. Um, and then, uh, the final position is one that, uh, Mr. Sheville and I have been working on, we're gonna, we're planning to bring to you in January, which is a utility construction inspector. That's a grade eighteen, uh, the reoccurring cost for that's about eighty-five thousand dollars, and there would be in need of a vehicle there in the utility department for that person to go out and inspect all the utility work. On, um, the, the combination plans reviewer and the construction inspector, we do believe we can recover. Uh, funds on that from permit funds and, and inspection funds, uh, on the utility side. Um, but there is really no way to recover funds on the. The first position.
First position.
That, that's a pretty much just a, would be a general fund obligation. So your total recurring cost for these two positions, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, the one-time cost of about seventy-six thousand dollars. For the two vehicles, uh, total estimated cost for all of it, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand in this, in this first year.
I have a question, Mr. Cully, if I could.
Mr. Long.
How come on the public works, construction manager fringe benefits, there's a. A star above that on that one, but not on the fringe benefits on the utility construction inspector. What's the little star for? Why is it different?
Mrs. Long, that is, that is, uh, that would be applied to all the positions, it's simply saying that we're assuming the most expensive, uh, health insurance cost, the, the family plan. The cost could be, end up being less than that, but we always wanna go with the, uh, worst-case budgets scenario.
Yeah, and, and whenever we budget a new position in the, in the budget, just during budget time, we do budget that for. The family.
Parents.
And sometimes we don't have that, but you just don't know, and so you have to budget worst-case scenario, so this.
That's good to know. Mr. Sealy? Oh, oh, oh. Mr. Black?
Um, I'll ask, I'll ask you this offline, yes, I got a question for you, but it's all, I'll ask it offline.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we go forward with the new positions. Of, um, as presented, public works, construction manager. The, uh, building and planning reviewer. And utility construction inspector positions, start interview.
Second. There's a motion and a second. That we move forward with the. New positions that's outlined by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes had it. You wanna do the calendar now?
We have, we have, we can do close session.
Close session after.
We include, uh, like, your, as, uh, normal finance department status, uh, uh, update status of capital projects for your reviews. So unless anybody has any direct questions, I'll move on, um. Tomorrow, uh, there's a home dedication at three thirty, uh, have a dead. Uh, home dedication. Remember where that was, the Fama, Fama problem. Early Saturday morning, eight AM, is track supply, grand opening and ribbon cutting at eight, a little before eight, so once that's done. Uh, on the twentieth, there's a ASJ ribbon cutting ceremony at corner two oh seven and six thirty-nine. Um, that's Monday morning at eleven. Um, remember offices are closed, uh, for holiday on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Um, and then again on the thirty-first. Um, and then obviously, uh. There's the, um, obviously, but on the seventh of January is the, uh, ribbon cutting for the Lotus Academy at the Hall Lady Smith, uh, elementary school, and then our next meeting, six PM. On the eleventh of January, and then Martin Luther King holiday on the seventeenth, and the. Second meeting on the twenty-fifth in January, so those are, will be all the meetings we have coming up in the ribbon cutting, so. That's really all's on the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Cully.
If you need a close session.
Yeah, Mr. Black, you have the close session?
Yeah. I just gave it to you.
And while they're dismissing us for, with, by looking for what they had to read, I wanna wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, God bless, have a great season.
Alright, I move the board convening close session pursuant to the real estate and consultation legal counsel exemption, section twenty-two, thirty-seven, eleven, A. Eight-three-eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding a potential acquisition of real estate in the Ladies' Theater. Or use of, uh, as a satellite sheriff's office where discussion, open meeting would adversely affect the county's bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Second.
Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are now going to close session.
Yep.
Got three minutes and thirty-eight seconds.
You want us to go ahead and start?
Yes. Well, we got to certify, you can't certify without. Everybody love talking to them. Y'all was at the end.
And don't y'all make a mess, Pam, sorry.
Did you see, you don't watch Formula One racing, do you?
They have to bring this in Sunday. Have to, first by twenty-seven. Wrong out, they save that wrong. Put those two laps. Over. They, it's, uh, it's all.
I.
Can't just say aye when not for that point?
All right, I move that the Carolina County Board of Supervisors, Supervisors, Certified, to the best of each board member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by the Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to the which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Yes. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify. No action required.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Close the board, comment.
Uh, non-certified.
Mr. Black.
Merry Christmas, everybody, for a German.
So all in favor? Aye, we are a German, peace.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood, excellent job.